I'm now going to open the public, oh, do I have to consent? Sorry.
Yeah, we have to take a vote on it.
Those calls got me rattled. Okay, do I, do I have a motion to approve the one to nine consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Do we need to take a roll call?
No.
We should because we have a member participating virtually.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Councilmember Holland.
Yes.
Councilmember Golia.
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor Whitmer.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing on item ten. And that is to waive the first reading and introduction by only in ordinance adding section twelve point zero six point zero three zero D. And chapter twelve point ten to to the Atherton Municipal Code clarifying maintenance responsibilities of owners of property adjacent to public right of way. And imposing liability on owners of property adjacent to public sidewalks. For injuries suffered on public sidewalks as defined, and we have a report by Robert.
Before Robert goes.
Before Robert does that, let's stop the recording again briefly and remove some more people.
Are they commenting in the chat, Andrea? Is that what you're saying?
There was some more video feeds that were people that turned on their camera and put up profile pictures that weren't appropriate.
Okay, so while Anthony is, is you still recording?
Yes. And we've gotten rid of the offending user.
Good, okay. Before Anthony, before Robert gets started, I just wanted to note in advance. As the mayor indicated earlier about the disclosure of ex parte communications, I was at that meeting with the mayor with the Lloyden Park residents. And subsequent to that, there was a lot of email back and forth with a number of those residents in a, in a group format. And in my responses to those residents, I did articulate that I did support and would recommend to the council this evening, the removal of the word solely from the ordinance in terms of the sole liability, remove that word from it, as well as recommend that the council consider as we move forward in developing our own sidewalk assessment and repair program, that the town pay for the assessment program as well as the grinding program. And that if it is a, you know, physical removal of something in front of someone's house to replace an entire section of sidewalk due to a trees or root failure or something like that, that that be something that the property owner is obligated to pay for. And they could use the town contractor services to do that. Or at some point down the line, the council could discuss a cost sharing methodology as part of that program. That program is not on the agenda this evening, but the ordinance itself is, and it's for sidewalks and full rights of way throughout the town. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robert and Andreas to move forward with the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Chapter eight point two zero of the Atherton Municipal Code defines public nuisance and provides for nuisance abatement code enforcement on private property. For street frontage areas, the town has historically used a combination of local law, our encroachment ordinance, which governs work and facilities within the public right of way in front of people's homes and state law to pass along the maintenance responsibility and legal liability for the street frontage areas in front of people's homes. And that street frontage area is defined as the area between the edge of pavement, the improved roadway and the property line. And putting that maintenance, I mean, putting that maintenance responsibility on the private property owner, because often they have a variety of improvements there, whether it's landscaping or other things within that, within that area. That when the town defines an issue or receives a code complaint, the adjacent property owner is advised of the issue in front, the frontage issue and given notice to abate. In the case of construction projects, the town reviews plans for compliance with its municipal code with regards to design requirements as part of an encroachment permit process. And they are given the opportunity to build those items through that permit process, but they also have the obligation to maintain those improvements. Each year, staff receives through a variety of means and methods numerous complaints with regards to frontage improvements, and those range from overgrown landscaping items installed in the right of way without a permit, trip hazards or other nuisance issues. And as indicated previously, the adjacent properties is contacted to address those issues. While the town doesn't have the resources to address all issues in one fell swoop, the ordinance provides and outlines a process and a methodology for addressing these issues. Since nineteen forty-one, section fifty-six-ten of the Street and Highways Code has provided that property owners are responsible for the lot, the area fronting their lots within that public right of way. And so it's through that section as well as our current municipal code that we have been governing. The city attorney has advised that we need to strengthen our ordinance to maintain, maintain that process which we have in place. And so as outlined in the staff report, jurisdictions deal with it in different ways. There is a majority of jurisdictions within the county that have adopted ordinances in compliance with section fifty-six-hundred, as well as implemented a variety of different programs to assist with addressing the issues. And so with regards to liability, with the approval of the ordinance, we'll be able to have a more clear outline of liability and responsibility. We have recently conducted an inspection of the sidewalks within the Lloyden Park area and have an assessment of about how much uplifted sidewalks and other issues that need to be addressed. I think we've identified approximately forty-three thousand dollars of areas that can be ground and addressed with, without fully removing sidewalk and replacement. But there are other areas that require removal. One of the biggest impact, one of the biggest issues is really related to trees and vegetation. And so as trees grow, they provide a lot of beauty, a lot of shade, but they also on occasion either uplift sidewalks, damage roadways and grow into the roadways. And so these are things that we also need to address. And then there's also the maintenance responsibilities of property owner to maintain their shrubbery and trees such that they are not a liability or a hazard to the public. And so that includes, for example, trimming vegetation back away from the edge of the road for visibility as well as for safety for pedestrians and cyclists. We get numerous complaints about overgrown shrubbery that grows into bike lanes, for example. But then there's also tree clearance issues. And so by approved guidelines from both FHWA and Caltrans, there are certain clearance requirements that we're required to maintain. And so what we have in the ordinance is eight feet of clearance above a pedestrian walking area and fourteen feet of clearance over the roadway, so that it reduces the likelihood of pedestrians and vehicles hitting tree limbs and branches. As George outlined, we will be seeking guidance with regards to programs to assist with addressing the issues with regards to sidewalk repair and others. And so there are recommendations in the staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Does anyone on the council have any questions?
I don't.
I actually have one. Can you clarify, just to be, when a tree falls down in the right, in the road itself, how is that handled?
Well, it, I'm going to say, if it is a town tree and we have a limited number of town trees, then we will fully address it. We will clear the roadway and we will remove the tree debris. When it comes to private trees, whether it is fallen from the private property directly or from the frontage area, our responsibility is public safety and accessibility. So what we will do is we will either with our crews or through contract clear the roadway. So we will remove limbs, branches. If the tree is all the way across, it will get cut up, but it'll be pushed over to the side in front of the property owner's home so that they can take care of it.
So they're responsible for moving it?
They're responsible for removing it. Our primary objective is public safety. And so we need to clear the roadway to make sure it's clear and accessible to the public and emergency vehicle response.
So does anyone in the public have any comments on the side of?
We have one comment online. And the question is, what if, what natural forces take down my tree? What if natural forces take down my tree? Or my hedges cause them to fall onto public property? How long do I have before I'm fine? And if I need to call a professional services person?
Okay, again, so if it falls within the street, we will clear the street. We'll get called out. We'll, we'll have that cleared. The property owner will be advised to take care of the debris. And, you know, usually they're given a reason. I mean, depending, it's really going to be circumstance dependent. If fifty trees fell down and it's impossible to get a tree care provider, it's understandable. But there are, you know, our expectation is that the property owner will take care of it expeditiously. So as long as they're moving forward in that regard, I don't think there's an issue.
We have two more people in the room who indicated they wanted to make a comment. Mr. Frank Burke and then Mr. Jim Massey.
You're going to give me a three minutes? Thank you. So anyway, I, I'm Frank Burke, Lloyden Park resident, seventy-six Bello. My wife and I have lived there for ten years and we enjoy it very much. I enjoyed the dialogue with the city manager and the mayor. And the city manager and I became pen pals over the last couple of weeks, trading memos back and forth. I was going to talk about the solely issue. If you're prepared to accept the city manager's recommendation, then I will skip over that and move on to something else. Because, thank you. The there's a lot of people in the town, including myself, who had no idea that this was an issue, that there was, that we had liability for things like that. I was asked to fix a square on my sidewalk and I did, did it because it just asked me to. And but a lot of people didn't know that they had these responsibilities to take care of their sidewalk and especially overhanging bushes and trees. The sidewalk issues, when you have trip hazards, in my opinion, the most serious liability issue is elderly people who are walking in the dark. Because if they fall, they're going to get much more seriously injured than a young person or even a middle, middle, middle-aged person. They break their hips, they went up in the hospital, and there's a big liability there. So the due diligence that's kind of built into the program that the city is contemplating, I think would help alleviate those, the most obvious hazards and get them fixed. I, you've seen some of the pictures. I think some of these trip hazards have been on the sidewalks the entire ten years I've lived there. So we're all on notice of these. If someone tripped tomorrow, there'd be liability issues to deal with, and they're better taken care of. The other issue is overhanging plants. We have a lot of people pushing baby carriages. When they come to the trip hazards, they go out into the street. And then there's a woman who brings people in, her, we have a daycare center and she takes the kids down to the library. I don't know, once or twice or three times a week. And she has, was complaining to my wife this morning that there's a lot of overhanging plants and she feels kind of squeezed on the sidewalk and she doesn't feel, doesn't want to go out into the street for obvious reasons with a trailer full of kids. So that has to be taken into account, but I would be happy if the city gave me a warning to fix anything that you tell me. There's a lot of other people, though, that have concerns about the cost. It's always been free. These, these sidewalks are now thirty years old, according to Jim Janz, who's out of the country. He said it was last done in nineteen ninety-two or so. So we're dealing with thirty-year-old sidewalks and there are some obvious places that need serious repair. And I think there are a lot of people that want to be heard on that issue, and I'll, I'll see the floor to them since my time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. And thank you for the city manager and the mayor for their time and attention.
Do we have any other public comments?
In the room, Mr. Massey wanted to comment. I see another gentleman with his. Okay.
People online can't hear Jim.
There it is. Oh, what a great job everyone did. And I know this has been said many times with our new facilities in Atherton, they've really, they've really done a great job. And I thank the council for figuring out how to fund the whole operation. That was no small task. So thank you for that. On this item, I didn't know how sidewalks were handled by the city or by the person who owned the property. I've been in Atherton now for thirteen years. And all of a sudden, I went to a meeting with the mayor and the city manager. And they started to tell us this thing, and there's a lot of stuff about it. And there's a lot of issues that emerged. And the concern I have is I wouldn't want it to go so fast that I didn't have enough time to understand how it's going to affect me in terms of insurance, insurance policies, getting a hold of people to find out what does it really mean? I'd like to know that before something happens. And the city says that we're no longer involved in it. And I'm not saying that's the case. I just like to know what the case is. So I really employ you to give us some time to understand what's going on. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to make a comment. I put my card in, but apparently it disappeared. So beg your pardon on that. So my name is David Barca. I live in Lloyden Park. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to especially thank the mayor and our city manager, Mr. Roderick, for appearing in our own home a few weeks ago and helping us to understand these issues about the sidewalks in Lloyden Park. It's, it is complex, and I would echo the comments just made by Mr. Roser that we'd, I would prefer that we take a little more time to look at this. So I also want to say happy anniversary, Atherton. So my family has resided in Lloyden Park in the home that we occupy today for seventy of the one hundred years that Atherton has been in existence. The sidewalks were present then and were considerably newer, but they were there forty years, or forty, wait, what is that, seventy years ago? And I used to use my roller skates and go around the block on them. Over the years, every Lloyden Park neighbor has enjoyed both the convenience and the safety that the sidewalks provide. Though these sidewalks are still very functional for us and something we do brag about, they do suffer from neglect and in a few areas do present rather serious hazardous situations. All current, in my estimation, all current Lloyden Park residents probably inherited the trees and shrubbery that abuts the sidewalks from previous owners and from other nature. I doubt any were really forewarned about the maintenance and repair issues that we discussed a few weeks ago, including myself, unfortunately. There is a liability issue, and it's easy to imagine somebody tripping on any of the sidewalks in our, on our area. My inclination, my assessment is that people who are injured in that fashion, wait, one more minute. In that fashion would include both the city as well as the homeowner in any action that they would take. The current proposal for liability, it makes sense only if the homeowner is wantonly negligent in addressing the repairs and otherwise fails to to address the issue. My, my comment is really, why not look at this slightly differently, at least for the time being? And that is, maybe the town could take responsibility and for the maintenance and the repair. And they also could take responsibility for the liability, but not if the owner is put on notice and not if the owner is willfully negligent. But in other words, reverse the situation. There was this sole liability question was put up before, and I understand the, the, it's been addressed a little bit. So sorry. Bottom line is that if the city may want to consider replacing all of the sidewalks at this point in time, it may be prohibitive, but it could in the long run be cost effective. It would put everything on the same stable basis. Sidewalks would be new, maintenance would be minimal. And the ownership, homeowners would know their responsibilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Walter Robinson online.
Hey, Walter.
Good evening. Walt Robinson, I've been in this, in Lloyden Park, so I'll address only the sidewalk issue here. Been here fifty-two years and without duplicating what anybody else has said, you can see what the reaction was that we've had to this. I want to address the two comments that George made. First, thanks to George for addressing these issues that we have raised and for the town council. First, the question was, what do we do with maintenance going forward? George made a brief comment. When I talked to him about it, being a pen pal as well, he said that he would support not only this grinding, but also fixing raising spots. As you probably know, they go around, sometimes they put asphalt on there to solve any brake problems. And also to repair any, anything in the sidewalk that was less than an entire square. You probably noticed, those of you who don't have sidewalks, that they're done in squares. And so he said that would, he thought would be reasonable to propose to council. So I agree with that. In fact, I think you ought to do a whole square because when they do it, could do it easily. Second point, the points mentioned now about what the cost would be to kind of get it up to speed. Of course, David Barca's comment would be obviously one way to do that. But for the reasonable cost, why not get it up to speed? The town has been responsible for this. They ripped these sidewalks up. They've replaced parts of them. They put the whole one in to start with. So we're now at risk of really how this, how it was done by the town. So I would very much support what was said here about why don't we end up with the thirty-two thousand dollars or whatever it is, and also replacing these squares that have to be done? I'm rather shocked at the numbers that were put out as to how many things would have to be done, but I'd much appreciate it if that could be done. So as I understand, a resolution that would accompany whatever this final language is in the ordinance would say that the council would authorize staff to both bring it up to speed in the manner that was discussed, as well as, of course, taking then the response, limited responsibility going forward. So I'd much appreciate if that could happen. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
I don't have any more comments online.
We have one in the room here, please.
Green light on?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Interesting, I had lunch at the Goose today with a friend of mine from Mendel Park. And he asked me, what about the sidewalk issue? He said, Mendel Park, we pay for our sidewalks. He said, I even had one in front of my house repaired right away. But first of all, I want to thank you for the soul thing and for attending the meeting at Lloyden Park. My comments as usual may be a little bit off the wall, but here we go. Atherton is the wealthiest zip code in the nation by definition. And it appears that Atherton cannot afford to fix their sidewalks, and what about their roads? So this is, I was going to address the soul issue, but this is an optic issue we need to look at. I mean, if this town can't afford sidewalks, they can afford these lovely, beautiful buildings. And I've lived in there, in Lloyden Park for, since nineteen seventy-eight. I've never had, the city has always taken care of the sidewalks. I do not think it's an exorbitant expense for the city to do that. And I would really appreciate you continuing as just part of the public perks of the city to do that. Thank you for your time. And again, I appreciate this release of the sole responsibility. And look out for the optics. We look bad as a town to be doing, to doing this to smaller homes in town. Thank you.
Please step up to the mic.
My name is Sharon Hume, and I am a resident of Lloyden Park since two thousand and five. And I have a sidewalk in front of my house, just as everybody else has sidewalks in front of my house. And never once have I been told, or has it been, or was it in my contract when I purchased my house that the responsibility for the sidewalks was under my purview? So part of, so as most of my, my co-residents have said, stated forth that this has been a surprise, a real surprise to all of us that this, this has come up. And I think there is the two issues here. There's the one about the responsibility. And again, I would like to thank George for his position on this. But I would also agree with Bob Roser that I think we need a little bit more time to come up with a, with a fair resolution and to see what potential alternatives there are for financing the sidewalks. I agree with the proposal that if they're brought up to speed, because it's all our, our assumptions that the sidewalk should be maintained, or have been, not should be, but have been historically been maintained by the city. A couple of years ago, they put in the handicapped areas. Nothing was said about that it was a responsibility of the homeowners. So we have just always assumed that this was a responsibility of the city. The other thing that I would like to bring up, and this was, this was brought up by Jim Janz, who, as we all know, is, is not available tonight, but there has been, there's a report in the New York Times or an article in the New York Times that there's a federal grant program that was created as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law of twenty twenty-one that will provide five billion dollars over five years to local governments to improve safety conditions. And I would certainly think that the sidewalks in Lloyden Park, given the amount of people that walk through the sidewalks, would be a safety commission. Obviously, the residents of Lloyden Park can't, can't apply for these funds, but the town certainly could apply for a portion of these funds. So I would appreciate it if alternatives like that were investigated before we just sort of decide that this is going to be how we're going to pay for the sidewalks maintained. So I just appreciate for the council to have an open mind and maybe to give it a little bit more time for us to come up with a resolution that, that is agreeable to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Hume. Anybody else? Okay, and nobody online? Okay, so I would like to bring this topic for comment.
You close the public hearing?
Oh, close the public hearing and open it up for comment, council.
For the mayor?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. It's really good to hear from all of the Lloyden Park neighbors. And I have to say, I think that a lot of other neighbors in Atherton are kind of jealous that they don't have sidewalks in front of their houses and on their streets. But that's just not how the neighborhood has been built out throughout the, throughout the rest of Atherton. I have, I think, two questions and one comment. One of the questions was, you know, I always thought that the town paid for the repairs of the sidewalks, you know, in the past. And I think, and city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, that we've had, since nineteen seventy-eight, we had a parcel tax that every four years, no, eight years, how many years would the, did, did the parcel tax go? It was like every eight years or something like that. And it was renewed until twenty eighteen or something, and it failed. It, it, it failed to be renewed. But it was for roads and streets repairs. So I think a lot of those repairs of the sidewalks came from parcel tax money.
The grinding effort.
The grinding efforts, okay. But not the replacement of the.
Full panel replacements were property owner.
And so they had been billed back, like the city would repair them and then build back to the residents. So I guess that was the standard operating procedure. So I think our. So I think our current proposal is to continue paying for the grinding.
That's what staff
That's what staff's recommending, that we would continue paying for the grinding. And a lot of the trip hazards can be remedied by the trip by the grinding method. But there are some that where the tree roots have been so big and invasive and popped up the panels that panels need to be replaced. However, even if the panels are replaced, I mean, what happens to that? So my question is, what happens to the tree root? Do we grind the tree root down and wouldn't that damage the tree? Because you can never make it back the way it was initially, you know, when the tree was just a sapling planted there and all the panels of the sidewalk were level. So that's an issue. I've seen in other areas where they put a rubber mat literally over that tree root.
They've done that in they did that in Redwood
In Menlo Park also.
That came up. So staff investigated that and those agencies aren't doing that any longer.
No.
Particularly Redwood City, because it they degrade at different timeframes than concrete. And that in and of itself creates another dripping hazard. So.
So what would be the remedy in that situation? I'm thinking really in front of Jim Janz's house because that tree is very invasive.
So I'll let Robert kind of express how that might play out, but the the issue is if we do cut those roots, that could either kill the tree or make the tree less stable in some areas. So clearly, the the issue would be continuing liability. Robert?
Thank you. Yeah, so I'm going to say that I agree with you that tree roots cause all kinds of havoc and it's hard to tell on the surface where how large a lot of the tree roots are, with the exception of that one, that one we know is rather invasive. And so some sidewalk repairs can happen and you can cut a root and it won't necessarily adversely impact the tree, but there are many that would. And so that is something that I think we have a little blurb in the staff report that we do need to have a larger conversation around with regards to heritage trees that cause liability or other dangerous situations.
Okay.
And so right now, staff has the authority when folks come in for a tree removal permit to address dead or dangerous trees. Those are usually ones that are dead or look at like that there may be some imminent risk of things coming down. We're likely going to come back to you with a recommendation of kind of expanding that definition and providing staff with some additional authority to allow folks to remove heritage trees that may be causing trip hazards and other impacts. If the and one of the things that we're going to have to have that conversation about with regards to the program is if the town is going to repair or replace those sidewalks and have to cut those trees, we can't be held liable for the damage to that tree.
Okay. My other question is, I know we're talking about how dangerous it is, a trip hazard for elderly people walking around or mothers with baby carriages. In the past, we kept track of how many trips hazards, you know, trip hazard incidents there has been over the last
We do. We have a liability pool, participants in Plan JPA.
Okay.
And they do track
They track it.
Ball incidents, and we have had trip and fall incidents in the right of way.
Okay, all right. Well, I think it's really an issue that needs to be addressed, and I think that it's good that we've got the community involved at this point because I don't know why you wouldn't have had some kind of a conditional condition in your sales and purchase contracts about that. And at least maybe Dave could might might shed some light on that in transferring property, you know, what your responsibilities are.
I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry, Bill. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, you know, as you probably surmised, I was with George during those meetings and met with him thereafter. And in in the discussion, that's when he and I discussed, you know, since the parcel tax was paying for things before, it was just assumed that the town covered them. And so the town should continue to cover them. However, the the replacements of the parcel of the of the of the square, George had indicated to me that they the homeowners were notified that they needed to pay for that, which was like three hundred dollars or something like that. I forget what the exact amount was, which is essentially staff's recommendation. Also, with regards to the liability and things like that, you know, we have to remember that we already have that liability passed on to the homeowners by, you know, via state law. And now this is an update to the state law that we need to go ahead and codify. So you may remember when we've had issues when trees have fallen on cars or whatever. You know, the people had sued the town and the town, you know, rejected the claims and then went to the homeowners for them to to fix. Now, if the owner homeowner had been regularly or periodically maintaining that tree, you know, then they can't be found negligent. However, if they haven't touched that tree in ten years, you know, they could be considered to be negligent and then would be, you know, held liable. So that's been the case ever since I've been on the council, because we get these things periodically, as you may all remember. But I I do agree with staff's recommendation, which, you know, George and I had spoken about with regards to the grinding, we should just continue the grinding situation. Jim Massey brought up Menlo Park. Menlo Park has an allocation unit where everybody in their property tax pays for the maintenance of the sidewalks throughout the town, since the whole town has sidewalks. Here in our town, the whole town does not have sidewalks. And so, you know, we can't have all the taxpayer funds go to support one little section of the town. So I thought it was a good compromise to do the grinding. There's obviously some flexibility with regards to if somebody's out of town. You know, when we go to notify them that there's been a problem, if they're not in town, well, then, you know, there's nothing they can really do right then. But, you know, there needs to be a way of getting them, you know, a message that, you know, something needs to be done or that the town then would take responsibility for doing it and then charge them in arrears, which is how it has been happening in Lloyden Park for quite some time, at least while Steve Tyler was there. So so I think that, you know, the compromise that, you know, staff is putting forward is a is a is a good compromise. And as as you know, as we pointed out, George, as George's staff report has pointed out, we have an obligation to codify this based on a court ruling, if I remember right. And if we don't codify it, then then that could be problematic for the city. So, you know, we can't take on that liability. Because, you know, we don't have the funds. We may be the richest city in town, but our city is is not very rich. The people in the town are rich, but the city is not very rich because as you look at the tax rolls, you know, we get about eight to eight and a half cents for every tax dollar, which far pales to what the the fire district gets paid. The educational system gets paid and the county gets paid as well as other other opportunities. So, you know, the town is not, as we all know on the council, the town is not well to do. But I, you know, I think that if there's a better compromise, you know, I'd love to hear it. But, you know, we did air out, you know, I think most of the discussions of Menlo, excuse me, with excuse me, with Lloyden Park. And and, you know, they have some legitimate concerns because, you know, they, at that time, when we went to them, you know, staff's position was you have to pay for the grinding too, which didn't seem to me to be fair. And so, George, you want to comment on on the liability, how it's been sitting up up to this point in time?
How the how the liability has been sitting?
Yeah, that if, you know, if if a tree falls on a car going by their their house, how is the liability handled?
So if it if it's the property owner's tree or the property owner's stumps, rocks, holders in the right of way, mailbox, keypad, anything like that, and it is, it causes harm to someone else. And it's due to negligence in some way of that property owner, they're liable for that. It's in the right of way. Car door may have hit it, scratched the car, whatever that case is, they're liable for that tree falls on the car. Exactly. We've talked about those things. But if it's something done by somebody else, for example, it's a Xfinity or Comcast wire or it's an AT&amp;T box or something like that, then in their negligent, in terms of their maintenance of it, they're liable for it.
Right. So I, you know, I think we need to just keep keep in perspective what the situation has been and what the situation has been also when we had the parcel tax, which I don't believe we need. Because you've seen some of the surpluses that we're projecting to have. And I think it would be fair for us to do the grinding. So I support the the states or the the city's recommendation. But I think that delaying this, we can have the city attorney comment on it, but delaying it, I think, could be problematic for the city.
Rick?
Okay, so I think that the most important thing here is that we take a step back and look at the town as a whole. We're responsible for the entire town. The for me, the principal issue here isn't about sidewalks. Mostly what we've talked about is about sidewalks because sidewalks get disrupted by roots and create an unsafe situation. And everybody is aware of that. And and I think that some of the comments, particularly about people at risk at night, walking where sidewalks are disrupted, is a problem. Our responsibility and our residents' desire is for this place to be safe and for that property between our properties, the right of way between our properties and the street, it has to be safe. The person that knows the most about that are the property owners. So when you think about how you're going to handle maintenance and liability, there has to be a duty on the property owner to pay attention to what's going on in front of their property. And for me, the biggest principle here is to not focus principally on sidewalks, but is to focus on that area of property between your property line and the street. That's the right of way and that and everyone in the town has that right of way area. In Lloyden Park, there's sidewalks in that right of way area, but there aren't sidewalks anywhere else in town, and we need to establish a principle that's going to apply to everyone. Otherwise, it's unfair. I understand that there are some particular situations that apply to sidewalks because they get disrupted in particular by tree roots and they become unsafe. And at one point, the town, I understand, replaced all the sidewalks. That creates a a perspective that the town's responsible for those sidewalks. And this issue's been raised because George raised it as a result of this court case and a result of how San how San Jose handled this by trying to establish a principle that dealt with that frontage. In San Jose, that frontage almost always includes sidewalks. But in Atherton, it doesn't. So I really think it's important that the big principle be what happens in that right of way, whether there's a sidewalk there or not. And that and and I think the right answer to that is for the property owner to be responsible for maintaining that and to be alert as to what is safe and what isn't safe. And I and I think that that's what the state law previously did. And now, in order for us to enforce that perspective, we have to incorporate that into our code because of this court case, which I think is fine. I do think that there are some particular issues that that apply to where there are sidewalks. And I just want that to kind of be the secondary focus rather than the primary focus, because I think the primary focus should be the same throughout the entire town. In my opinion, the staff recommendation with respect to the sidewalks that the staff that the town take responsibility for the grinding and or for doing an assessment, which I know we've done at different times and to do the grinding, that is not an enormous cost. I think it's reasonable. I think we should get those sidewalks to a place where they're relatively safe. And I I but I do think that the onus needs to be on the property owner to inform the town if there is an unsafe situation in front of their property, whether they have a sidewalk or not. But in particular, since we're talking a lot here about sidewalks, I think in Lloyden Park, if the property owner thinks there's an unsafe situation, then they need to let the town know. And the town should address that in this grinding program that staff has proposed.
I have to follow on what you were saying, Rick, is that we're saying as a city, we're going to go out and inspect the sidewalks and grind them. Are we also going to expect the trees to see if the trees are in the walkway and at the right height? Does that be part of a service we'd also provide? Because that applies to every place.
Typically, that's a complaint driven issue.
That's a what driven?
Complaint driven.
Complaint driven, but it's a safety liability issue as well. So if we're policing the safety of stubbing your toe on on a sidewalk, why would we not be policing whether or not it's blocking, you know, signs or in the walkway or above the street?
I'll try and address that kind of incrementally. The sidewalks, we can do an assessment. We did an assessment to kind of get a handle of what the condition is. Though trees grow, the roots aren't going to change what we do to the sidewalk very much in a limited amount of time. And so as we take care of that, you can go back and say, maybe look at the sidewalks again every year or every two years. On the other hand, trees, branches and everything else continually grow. We don't have the resources to drive around town to see every branch and every limb that is creeping out. And so typically, those complaints, we do get complaints on a regular basis, whether it's branches growing out and impacting bike lanes, as I said before, or as one of the Lloyden Park residents indicated, that a shrub is growing out and starting to block the sidewalk. Where we can take those complaints and advise the property owners of their maintenance responsibility. But to go out on a regular basis and inspect every street for every branch. And how often would we do that would be the next question. Right? And so that's why it's typically done on a on a complaint driven basis, as most code cases are.
Is that then, should we assume that's also true of other dangerous things that people do? People put out rocks and that are oversized, that are out of compliance. They'd have drainage systems that may be affected and backed up and do all those kinds of things. Are they all a complaint driven? We don't do any influencing?
Most of those are complaint driven.
We do, however, have a code enforcement officer and two working on. And so if there is a safety condition that that officer observes as they're out in the field, they do take proactive measures and knock on the door and let the property owner know or move something out of the roadway or something like that. But if it's an immediate threat, otherwise it's a notification to the property owner, they're in the code enforcement process.
Is is the liability issue exactly the same? So if I if I have something, it'll they get I get a warning and then if I don't fix it, the city will fix it and then
If it's an immediate threat, if it's an immediate threat.
If, okay.
If it's just a small encroachment of vegetation into a sidewalk that's not pushing anybody out into the street, I wouldn't call that an immediate threat.
Okay, Bill?
Yeah, before you were on the council, Diana, you know, Georgia and I went all across the town, talking at neighborhood meetings, talking to them about the encroachment ordinance and and making sure that they understood that if they're putting things like rocks and things like that out there, they were responsible for it from a liability standpoint. They wanted to leave those things out there. They could get them added to their to their title and that would then live with the property, but it was clear And that would then live with the property, but it was clear to them that that was their responsibility, because we were getting a lot of complaints about rocks out there. This was several years ago when Mr. Lampres was still on the council.
Stacy?
Okay, I have a, I have a couple of questions. I I agree with how Rick described it. Um, but it inspired a new question, because you kept talking about the front of your house, and a lot of our properties are multi-frontage properties. So is that that would imply to all sides, I assume, and then specifically for properties that back up on ECR, since there's no reasonable expectation that those owners are looking on the other side of their fences on ECR, how does that one work in particular?
Um, so the first part is, yes, it would be all frontages. Uh, with regards to ECR, there's a lot of property owners that do take care of their trees and stuff. But a lot of the branches that come over on ECR are coming over from the trees that are on the private property side, and so they are the maintenance responsibility of the property owners. Um, we are just now completing a cleanup project on El Camino, cleaning up the shoulder and trimming vegetation in terms of the height requirement to make sure that it's clear over the paved roadway. Um, at this point in time, that's where we're at. We're looking at, um, I think through the program, after the cleanup, we're going to start doing some maintenance. But we're not going to be taking care of everybody's trees and shrubs. It's just going to be keeping the roadway clear. It should be the property owner's main responsibility to get care of their vegetation.
Okay, so that's something where the town would probably notice the homeowner if like their ivy is growing, because there's a lot of like, people have weeds and stuff that can go into the shoulder, so it's a hazard for pedestrians and bicyclists. I'm not as much worried about.
So and and then I'm going to say that, you know, over time, as El Camino real improves.
Yeah.
It, it's gonna.
Better. I'm just curious how that notice and stuff works.
So, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, yeah, well, so we'll call for a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance with the deletion of the words solely in the twelve dot ten dot one fifty liability section. I think that's where. And and to provide direction to staff to uh, develop and propose and bring back uh, a um comprehensively described uh, uh, maintenance uh, and review program for the sidewalks. Along the lines of what staff has suggested.
I'd like, I'd like to amend Rick's uh, amendment or suggestion to include also that the grinding will be continually maintained by the city. And that we're waiving reading.
Uh, yeah, that's that, I, that's part of, actually part of the motion, but it's direction to staff to bring us back a defined pro- program. So I think it's really important for the council to be clear about what that program is, but also for it to be published so the residents will know exactly what it is, and it's not just kind of a a feeling, but i- it's a defined program.
Oh, are are you suggesting that we look at this with the changes anew, or we can just look at it with the second reading?
Uh, I'm, I'm, I, I mean, I think that there's the amendment to the code, uh, which there's a first and second reading for, and there's direction to staff to separately uh, develop a program around uh, the sidewalk maintenance issue and to bring that back for our review. That's not part of the code.
Okay.
That's great.
Now, I I second it.
Yeah, okay.
And Madam Vice Mayor, before you move on, just to uh, further talk on what Councilmember DeGolia said in terms of timing. This is the first reading of the ordinance. It'll come back thirty days from now in October for the second reading, and then it will be effective thirty days after that. So there's a sixty day timeline uh, before the ordinance is actually effective.
And it would be great if staff could have developed that maintenance program by then, so we and the residents can be very clear about what the expectation is going forward.
So can we vote on that? Anthony, take a roll?
Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Councilmember DeGolia?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Widmer.
Aye.
Okay. So we're moving to that closes the public hearing. And I'm going to open to the regular agenda items. Uh, so we're at item eleven, respond to the grand jury report. Bike safety in San Mateo County, making bicycles safer in the county. And Steve McCauley, I believe, she's going to give us her report.
I'm hoping you've read the report.
They've all read the report.
So as you, as you know, the the process for the civil grand jury is to give the recommendations. We reviewed that in detail. And we agreed with the recommendations and the findings. Uh, we agree that, you know, bike safety and pedestrian safety is very critical in our community, especially as many people visit our community to walk and bike. Uh, one of the findings is we need to update our bike and pet master plan. So we'll be working on that. We've also established our bike rodeo that was in, was scheduled prior to this. That'll be in September, and it'll be an annual event, so that'll take care of the educational component for students and and for parents. So I would invite your questions at this time.
Thank you. Oh, the mayor, please.
Uh, chief, I see that we agree that we're going to report report uh, and record and send warning letters to people who are riding within three feet of uh, any bicyclists. How is that going to handle? How's that going to be handled? Um, I know that a lot of people complain about bikes. And I've seen some people on their, you know, riding their bike, whipping out their phone, uh, which is dangerous. But um, how how are you going to handle it? Somebody just calls in and says, hey, here's a license plate number? And you're going to send those people a warning?
Yes, it's handled very similar to how we handle those that choose not to stop when the school bus battle is out. Uh, bus drivers and motorists can call dispatch and make the complaint. We would send a similar letter, and so if a if a motorist, I'm sorry, if a if a bicyclist called in and said somebody was in the three feet zone and they had a license plate description of the car uh, from the registration, we can make sure that similarly matches, and then we can send an educational warning letter.
Well, how, how, what happens if they they were not uh, within the three foot zone, and somebody just decided to report somebody first off?
Uh, in my experience, in my experience, people aren't going to make up a complaint. It's something that in their mind or they've witnessed has occurred. I checked with our dispatch in the last few years, we've hardly received maybe one or two uh, complaints related to this. I don't think it'll be happening a lot.
Well, I'm concerned about it, so hopefully we'll get that report in your, in your monthly report, so we can see if it's becoming a problem. Because we just said, yeah, we said.
Bill, Bill, can I follow that up with a question? So we're on the same subject. Uh, he he asked about the issue of the report of um, if a driver is within three feet of a cyclist, which uh, I I share Bill's concern about how do we, how how do you deal with that? Because the the grand jury says that people should be uh, uh, notified and um, they should be, they should get warning letters if they're within three feet, but I don't know how you know. I
We we wouldn't know because we're not there.
You're not there, but also between the driver and the cyclist, it's really hard. How does a si- a si- the only way a cyclist would, I how are they going to report the person? They've got to be able to see the driver's license. That's
Well, the vehicle, the vehicle license.
Plate, the license plate, but that's pretty hard to do when you're cycling. You you definitely aren't going to have or in unless you're being foolish, you're not going to have your phone ready to take a picture of that.
You'd be surprised these days, but a- again, I don't see see this as a large problem, quite frankly. The the reverse issue we have is the complaints that we get from motors from bicycle violations, stop sign violations.
Yeah, and that's my second, that's my second question. What about, what about when people are driving outside, if it's a, if it's a class two or class three bike lane? And they're driving immediately on the line, and the car can't pull over any further because there's cars on the other side, or they're actually over the line in the driver's area and it's not a shero, like they do, for example, in other areas outside of town where these bike groups have three and four and five deep going down the road. And it's not, and it's not a shero.
Yeah, I think the intent of the grand jury and their finding is is for education, and it is about finding and penalizing, but it's just providing an education opportunity. And I relate it back to school bus stop sign violations that I've had a lot of years of experience with very similarly. That it's a mechanism so that we can identify, notify the registered owner. Many times, it's the son or daughter of that registered owner that's driving, so the parent can be aware and take action as needed. Um, so I I don't see it as a big issue. And and again, what we would take into account is the person's account of what happened. The vehicle license, vehicle description doesn't match, and then we would send a letter. Again, in my experience, letters that are sent rarely receive any feedback or complaint. Why did you send me this letter?
Okay, well, I I mean, because of these things that I just brought up, I would have thought that we would say that we partially agree and give some conditions to it, as opposed to we fully agree with these findings.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Um, so I I have a couple of questions. One is in the um, uh, report to the council from the city manager, uh, following your discussions with council members, uh, and leading up to the meeting tonight. You said that there were a couple of uh, comments from uh, relating to findings number two and three. And when I look at, the, maybe those are the recommendations rather than the findings. I, they have both a list of findings and a list of recommendations in the grand jury report. And so that, yeah, that's not particularly important, but you get back to me. I I was looking at the recommendations they made. They looked like the things that we have to respond to. And in particular, I wanted to know if staff thought that recommendation five, which directs the town or any other city or town in San Mateo County to update its bike and ped master pet plan uh, by June third of next year, if that plan is five years or older, which ours is. Uh, and my question is, do staff think it's reasonable that we would be able to update that master uh, plan, bike and ped master plan by June of next year?
Okay, uh, so it was finding number two and number three. Uh, and it was, uh, the council member felt that those should be partially agreed, not fully agreed. Uh, and then
Right.
The other one was the recommendation number two, and that it should be confirmed violations of the three foot before you issue the warning. And you could wordsmith those as the council deems appropriate in the response. And with respect to the bicycle pedestrian master plan, uh, Public Works Director actually just texted me and said, there's no way that we can actually have that accomplished by June of next year. So perhaps there's a better date that you could put to that.
Yeah, let's not even budget it.
Yeah, I guess, I I don't know if you recall, but we did have a recommendation in the CIP for doing a bike and ped master plan update.
Oh, I think it's good we redo it, but I'm just asking.
And so I I think right now, it wasn't approved in this year's budget, but it is outlined for next year's capital budget. And so I think it's fair to say that we will program it, we partially agree with the recommendation, and that we will program the re- uh, the update to the town's bike and ped master plan in the next fiscal year. But because of the amount of public outreach that's required for it, uh, it's going to take a little bit of time to actually do.
That's right.
And then can you just subset, can you just change the, our response to say a date that we think we could do?
Well, like I said, I think that because our budget is already adopted, I say, I think it's fair to say that we will program it or budget it for next fiscal year to to get started on it.
Good, great.
I just want to make a slight tweak to that recommendation to, instead of committing to putting it in the next budget, we should state in the letter that we'll consider it for the next budget, so we're not precommitting to any budget items right now, since we're not in the budget process right now.
Good idea.
Good, good advice.
Any other? Are there any uh, public comments on this? Anyone online, Anthony? Do I have a, do I have a motion as modified?
I'd like to mo- mo- um, approve this item as modified uh, by the council during this discussion and by the city attorney uh, to move forward with this and get it off our plates.
I'll second that.
What what is the council's direction with respect to finding number two, three, and recommendation?
Partially.
Well, can you state what those are? Because it wasn't.
Certainly, so number two is bicycle ridership, finding number two. Bicycle ridership as an alternative means of transportation, i.e. commuting to work, school, transit hubs, running errands is not increasing due at least in part to perceived safety issues. I think the concern was uh, that we partially agree instead of wholly agree, because the pandemic affected the use of that sort of transportation. And so there may be other factors involved in bicycle transportation other than just the one.
But but George, there are a lot more bicyclists now since COVID is over than there were before COVID. So I don't think that, you know, we should agree to that one, as I mentioned to you in your office.
Right.
Because it it's not true, not true in Atherton.
Well, women, I, that's, that's reverse, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. It's described as not increasing due at least in part, so there's already some wiggle room just in the finding to perceived safety issues, and I do think a lot of people do choose not to ride bicycles, especially in Atherton, because of perceived safety issues. So I think that we do agree with that finding.
I agree. I think that's right. And and I, I I mean, just to underscore that comment, um, yes, there are more cyclists now than there were before COVID, but there's more cyclists now than there were before we approved the sherrod bike lanes. Uh, and those sherrod bike lanes started a little bit before COVID, so I'm not exactly sure what what the reason is. We we have more cyclists than we had five years ago, that's for sure. I I think everybody knows that. And I'm not sure why, but I I would agree with Stacy if if there were a safer way than for people to ride, there'd probably be more cyclists, and we, as a council, have prioritized s- uh, creating safe bike lanes on roads to schools, so that kids would, so that the number one priority was to protect kids on their way to schools, which I think was the right decision, and we've made changes.
But that was only by putting sherros and not protected bike lanes.
Well, not, not separated, but but along Middlefield, it's not sherrod. It it it's a separate bike lane.
That's the exception.
But through the central.
For Selby Lane is a separate bike lane.
Right. Okay, so those are the only two.
But many, many of the uh, class two, and you know, we get to class, you know, class one bike lanes, they're going to involve widening the roads. So it's not just putting paint down.
Yeah.
That's right. Just my my read is that it, the consensus is that we agree with the find.
Yeah.
Uh, finding number three, bicycle accidents and incidents such as near misses are underreported if reported at all. The the suggestion was that we only partially agree with that.
I would say we only partially agree.
I think that's true.
I think we agree.
That they're underreported?
That they're, I mean, as a bicyclist, I've never reported near misses. I didn't even know that I could, so. And I'm.
Yeah, I I, I I'm like Stacy, I I don't report if there's a near miss or anything, and and I know that there have been accidents at the end of Glenwood of high schoolers going to to MA, and they've been run into by cars, and then, you know, no one was hurt. And the bicyclist gets on his bike and continues to class. So I know that those things happen.
They've researched this. This is a whole group that researched this, and this is what they found. And I can't imagine our opinions should go against unless someone has evidence, so I would think we should agree with that.
Okay, uh, reading that consensus, it's agree as well. And then the other one was recommendation number two. Uh, by December 2023, all law enforcement agencies, agencies should begin sending warning letters to motorists for violation of the three-foot law. Uh, and the response was when a complaint is received, the Atherton Police Department will begin sending out warning letters to motorists for violations of the three-foot law. The recommendation was to maybe add the word confirmed violations or some other language in there that provides some sort of mechanism for the PD to verify. I think that would be difficult for them to verify, but.
I think if someone's taking the time to report it, you kind of want to believe the victim of this kind of thing is my view. I mean.
There can, there can be some road rage out there.
Yeah, also our police chief thought it was fine.
Like four times it sounds like, so I don't know that we're need to create more parameters.
I don't agree with that Stacy because, you know, a, a car goes by and maybe it was in violation. And the guy is getting control of his bike. Maybe he has to go off the side of the road and just gravel there. He's trying to get it, uh, you know, under control. And he hadn't read the license right, or his eyesight isn't as good as, you know, 2020. Uh, yeah, I think we should try and confirm them or at least try to confirm them. So if we can put a weasel word in there, then I would be supportive of it. But, uh, you know, just to take it blanket as the, as the chief put forward, I don't support.
But the chief, sorry, just to, cause the chief said, I just want to clarify, cause I agree with you on that one, but the, it had to match the vehicle description to the license plate, right? So there's
It's confirming it, yeah.
It's confirming the vehicle identification, but it's not confirming the violation. And I think that's the mayor's point.
Well, how do you confirm the violation?
Exactly. So maybe the, the wiggle word is we'll endeavor to send out.
Yeah, endeavor is good.
That's fine.
Is that a good weasel word for you, Phil?
Okay.
I'll go with endeavor.
So there are, is that all the clarification you guys need for that motion?
Right, so that we would change the bicycle pedestrian master plan language as well as language for R2 to endeavor. The other two would remain the same. And then you need to roll call vote for that.
Okay, Anthony. Councilmember Holland?
Yes.
Togolia, Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Whitmer.
Yep.
Thanks.
Wow.
All right, we're on number 12.
Sorry.
Review and recommend potential multifamily housing sites and land use strategies to include in the project description for the environmental review of the six-cycle housing element. And we're gonna have a report with, uh, Brittany, the town planner. And
Yes, thank you. Good evening, council members. Brittany Bendix, town planner. Um, I'm also joined today by Adam Peterson from M Group. Uh, who is leading the SEQA project management of the, um, housing element. So we have a really brief presentation for you, really just so that we have a slide that we can refer to later during discussion. Um, as you'll recall, uh, in Jul- July 19th, we introduced the idea that we needed to refine a list of multifamily housing sites to study for the purpose of SEQA and the housing element. Uh, that staff report was included as an attachment to this staff report for anybody out there that would like a refresher on what was discussed. Uh, go ahead and move forward. Anthony, with the slide. Our purpose tonight is to redo, uh, sorry, review additional potential multifamily housing sites that came up at the discussion in July. Uh, as you'll recall, in July, you did, uh, you did vote to include 296 Bay, uh, Bay Road, 318 Bay Road and 352 Bay Road, as well as 99, uh, 999, 999 Ringwood, uh, to the list of sites that would just be studied for SEQA, not necessarily yet included in the housing element. And the density that we were looking at those sites was upwards of 20 dwelling units per acre. So consistent. I'm sorry, I'm seeing the head shake.
Oh, when, when the town discussed those Bay Road properties, I think it was 10 units an acre.
For, for secret purposes, it's the 20 units per acre and below. You, you, if we do it at 10 and then you ultimately decide you want to do 11 or 12, we'd have to go back and redo sequel for that. So the higher level just for the sequel purposes, but you could ultimately choose just 10 units per acre when you put them into the housing element.
Sure. So right now through SEQA, what's being analyzed is an upward limit of 20 dwelling units per acre. So next slide. Council also asked that we notify additional, uh, properties and neighbors within 500 feet at 175 Ravenswood, 185 Ravenswood, 190, 197 Ravenswood. And then all of the properties located in the public open space zoning district. That includes, um, Holbrook Palmer Park, where we've specifically been looking at the Gilmore House and Knox Play School site. So that's why that's called out there. The other, the next property listed is Menlo Circus Club. And then the final property we have listed here is the Bear Gold Reservoir Site, uh, which is, uh, managed by Cal Water. And the table here was included in the staff report. It shows the acreage of the site, the existing zoning, and then extrapolates out the maximum number of units that could be considered moving forward with conversations relative to the housing element at 20 dwelling units per acre. Uh, as the city manager mentioned, that doesn't mean, that's what the council has to choose. That's just the upward limit of what's being studied under SEQA because it's a lot easier to go lower after a SEQA analysis than it is to go higher. Um, I know that there are some requests relative to any feedback that we've received. So I do want to indicate that for 296 Bay Road and 999 Ringwood, we did receive comments from the property owners that they were interested in learning more about what this means for their, their site and how they would be able to develop. Uh, we did receive feedback from 318 Bay Road that they are not interested in being included. Um, and then we have not yet received feedback from 352 Bay Road. Uh, relative to the sites discussed for tonight. Uh, we did receive communication from both the Menlo Circus Club and the Bear Gold Reservoir Site that they have no intent to develop during this housing period as well. So with that, we'll go to the next slide. Which really captures the next steps. The purpose for this, uh, discussion tonight is to refine our project description so we can continue the environmental studies and get the feedback that we need from SEQA analysis to move forward with, um, actual choosing of the sites, which would, uh, occur in tandem with, uh, conversations about the objective design standards, identifying sites for analysis and conducting public outreach, as well as zoning code changes and drafting the zoning code amendments. Collectively, we do look forward to moving forward with the council, um, with this package, with adoption hearings and later this fall and the end of 2023. And that's really because we have a zoning ordinance deadline for January 31st, 2024. So that's, that's our timeline. That concludes the presentation and summary that I have for you tonight. Um, and I am available as well as my co- my colleague, Adam, to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions?
Yeah, question.
Go ahead.
So I thought that we were talking about the multifamily, uh, SEQA assessment for the POS properties as a whole. But your table shows a very small subsection of those properties, not those properties as a whole. I mean, the Holbrook Palmer Park is 22 acres. You show 1.42 acres and somehow that includes Gilmore House and Knox Play School, which I don't think has ever been discussed. And I'm a hundred percent opposed to targeting anything at Knox Play School. I, the, the, the way, the, the only way that we, uh, get uh, that we avoid, uh, the clause in the deed to, that the property go to Stanford, trustees of Stanford University is if there is incidental housing and it's been deemed that the Gilmore House is incidental housing. Knox, Knox Play School isn't housing. So I, I don't know how that gets targeted. Uh, and, and I, and I don't know how, and, and for, uh, for the circus club property, it's got to be more than a half an acre. I don't know why these subsections of the property are identified.
Sure, may I respond?
Sure.
Uh, sure, the, uh, I believe the Gilmore House came up in conversations at the July 19th meeting relative to the deed discussion. Um, and that may have been where Knox Play School originated from as well. Because those were the only potential areas where there was perceived space for that discussion with Stanford University relative to the deed. Um, so again, the purpose of the table is to kind of set forth a max, a maximum for consideration. Um, it was very clear that no other areas at Holbrook Palmer Park were of interest. And so that the 1.42 acres is really that area carved out. Similarly, the acreage that you're seeing for the Menlo Circus Club and the Bear Gold Reservoir Site is again narrowing down on site, the portions of the site that's already developed. And so if housing was included there, it would be relatively infill housing. So it would be retrofitting an existing building to accommodating additional units. It could be looking at a parking, parking lot or parking space and trying to preserve the general broader open space that is characteristic of those sites and really working only with the developable area. And then being able to communicate what that size is and give you a sense of how many units you could actually get from that development at this density.
And the, the Knox Play School did come up at the July meeting. It was brought up by a member of the city council with respect to developing teacher housing on top of Knox Play School and remodeling that entire structure.
But I don't think that, I don't think that the council as a whole agreed to that.
Well, when I summarized the remarks at the end, I raised that in as that would be the way that, uh, Knox Play School would be discussed. And that's what my summary was to the council, that the council then blessed.
Well, well, there was never support for it, George.
Like to take it out.
Yeah, take it out because it was, there was never support for it.
So it is the proposal not to rezone the whole POS sites, it's to rezone these subsections of the POS sites, is that the proposal?
They're, they're all within the POS zone, the entire site is, but this is what SEQA was looking at for the purposes of potential where the housing would go.
And, and like for the circus club, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the identification is, um, the current house, like really is on park, uh, that is currently a house that maybe could add a couple of more, you know, units to the house. And then there's some, um, living quarters, uh, for some staff that are already built that maybe could be expanded on within uh, this one other area of the park, of circus club, but not, you know.
When a project, forgive me if I'm stepping on toes here, but when a project moves through a development process, a multifamily development, they're required to do their own SEQA for their development. Is that correct?
Uh, that's partially true. It depends on whether or not they are using a state streamlining protocol.
A what?
In which a state streamlining provision.
A state streamlining provision, protocol?
Some of the new legislation that says they don't have to do that.
Okay.
But they'll go through that process for a specific development. SEQA was looking at, what's the potential, where could it go? And what's the impact and how do we address that or mitigate it in terms of the overall town and project sites? So it's not looking at a specific project.
But it's my understanding that the circus club would have no, um, uh, intention of redeveloping that one, you know, property that is currently, uh, used as housing.
That's correct, that's correct. Both the circus club and Cal Water have both said at this time, they have no interest in developing uh, workforce housing, which is the way we're looking at POS development within the next housing cycle. However, what we're looking at is including the POS zone within our housing element as an opportunity site for multifamily housing to satisfy both. You know, we're looking to HCD to say, we've identified all these little areas that could develop housing, not that they are going to develop housing in the next years. And maybe we develop POS zone and say you could have five workforce housing units by right uh, in terms of your development. So that the two current units they have at the circus club and the two that they have at Cal Water, uh, if they needed one or two more, they could actually do that without having to go through a full conditional use permit, public hearing, et cetera, process. It would be a ministerial approval because it's by right to develop those two additional units.
But it would clearly be up to the property owners.
Clearly up to the property. And we wouldn't include them in terms of numbers within our housing element to meet our goals within the cycle because they have no intent over the next eight years as they've stated to develop.
What are the actual rules around including things when you have a public statement that the, the owner doesn't want to? Can you still submit it? Like you were saying, you're, you can still submit it.
Yes, um, at this, that question came up, I believe, at the July 19th meeting. Um, and one of the things that, um, my colleague Jeff Bradley mentioned was that even though HCD doesn't want to see owner interest, they also acknowledge that as long as the potential is there, some other en- entity could come and acquire that parcel and develop it. Um, and so the opportunity is still there, even though the owner's interest might not necessarily be right.
Do you have to word it differently, like what you were saying, George, of where it's by rights as opposed to including it?
Again, this is just the SEQA evaluation process, but if you actually put them into the housing element for a zoning change, it would be specifically worded.
Okay. Stacy?
Uh, just to clarify, the ownership changing, I understand for a residential property, but Cal Water and Circus Club are never gonna change ownership. So how would HCD look at those oppor- opportunities?
They just may change their mind.
Yeah, I can see
A new, a new board member or whatever, you know? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mayor Whitmer has a question as well.
So please, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so I echo Rick's comment that, um, yes, it was mentioned by a councilwoman uh, about the Gil- about the Knox Play School, but there was never a vote taken and, and there wasn't consensus on that. So I don't think that that should be listed there.
The city manager summarized.
No, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just continuing if you don't mind. And secondly, you know, there are two residents at the circus club. Uh, one is for the stable manager and one is for the general manager. Um, and I spoke with, uh, Dan Mumbry uh, a- about this and that, uh, you know, the inclusion in the SEQA, but it doesn't necessarily mean there's an obligation. And, um, he was going to, you know, they said, hey, you know, somewhere down the road, we might do something. So including it in the SEQA could include it if they want to do it without doing a separate SEQA. But at this point in time, especially for, you know, our SEQA, uh, you know, we're saying that there is no plans at this time. So I think it's, everything's fine there.
I do too.
Some question.
Go ahead.
Oh, no more questions?
Comments, but I'll hold my comments.
Okay, so is there any public, can I open it to public comments? Anybody in the room or anybody online, Anthony?
Yes, she's been wanting to speak.
Hello, my name is Pamela Riddle. I live at 97 Frederick Avenue, which is, um, a budding on the, um, backside of my property, 999 Ringwood. I'm in the entrance going into Lindenwood. And, um, I strongly object to the properties at 999 Ringwood, 352 Bay Road, 318 Bay Road and 296 Bay Road be included in circula and be in- included in consideration for rezoning. I'm just hearing tonight a proposal for up to 20 dwellings an acre and structures up to four stories high in my backyard. I will lose all my privacy. You know, I purchased this home 29 years ago with my husband. And we had purchased in Atherton because it was a large, quiet, private lot. My swimming pool, because of placement on our, our property. My swimming pool, because of placement on our our property, is twenty feet from that fence line. And you're asking me to have a home where we have four stories of people looking down on me in my backyard. Uh, this is gonna diminish the value of our property and it's gonna change the character of Lindenwood. This is gonna cause property uh traffic congestion. How are you gonna put all these cars? There's no public transportation in this area. I'm really puzzled why these properties are being included and not ones that are more suited for multi-family housing in areas such as along the El Camino. There's no bus tra- traffic along there either. The only bus is one that brings students to um Hillview from that area. And there's a two-lane road, one in each direction and bike lanes. There's no parking along that road. I don't know where you're going to have people that are going to be able to park. And it's gonna flow into our neighborhood. People are gonna use that cutoff to cut through uh Frederick Avenue even more. And it's gonna damage the uh character of our neighborhood and the safety for pedestrians and for bicycle traffic. And the noise that's going to be from so many families living right behind me. And it's not just me, but all the people along Frederick Avenue that you're looking at impinging. Um, I I was surprised to even find out that this had occurred. I was under the impression from talks earlier that this was off the table. And I come uh come to learn just recently that it's back in consideration and now being put in a CEQA uh proposal for up to twenty units in my backyard. Uh, I I just, I just think this is wrong and and is ill-considered. And uh maybe we haven't been here enough to yell. But I'll get more people here and we'll continue to complain all through Lindenwood because it's not an appropriate use of zoning to try and appease the state's ridiculous requirements. Thank you.
Hi, hi, council members. Uh, so I also yeah, uh, I live in the Lindenwood on the sixty-one Frederick. It's been for nine years. We have been living there. Uh, like, you know, and very recently found about these four properties on the Bay Area corridor. So I want to really point out the significant safety issues, okay? So this area is right by the intersection is Bay Road and the Ringwood. It's a five-point intersection, single lane each way. Even if you go by the plan, as was said, like ten homes per acre, there's forty homes in this small area. At two point three cars per average family in California, this is about ninety cars in that four hundred linear feet range. These are as many cars as entirety from the Floodgate Park all the way up to the uh Willow Road, going through that intersection. So I'm just thinking of like these folks would have uh visitors coming in. Now, where would they park? There is no parking on that spot. Where would these cars go? And lastly, and then secondly, if you think about, so I also have kids, these are, one is like, you know, first grade and second is in the fourth grade. The fourth grader goes on his own from Frederick to the Laurel Upper Campus. The younger one, I bike or run behind her, take her to the school. As soon as you get on the Ringwood, on the days there are uh crash cans parked, you can't really come into the main road. You have to always watch out because the cars on the Ringwood don't stop. Like, you know, we just talked about the biking issues and the safety in there. They really go at about thirty-five miles in the morning when all the kids are around. Okay, quite often I have to ask them, hey, stop, can you not see us walking, running behind? Uh, so it seems a significant safety issue. Then the entire intersection from the Floodgate Park all the way up to the uh Menlo Oaks in there, it's crisscross of students going from to the lower campus, to the Menlo Atherton, to the lower upper campus, to the Hillview. And kids are biking in all the directions you can think about. And at this point, we are thinking of inserting ninety cars at that intersection. I just can't think about how that is, it's already not safe. How can that be safe? And most of the kids from third grade on, because Laurel is so few away, parents are busy, they are going on their own. Kids go and bike on their own act as soon as they hit in the third grade. There is a huge, uh, in the school, there is a bike bus thing where the entire focus of the parents is to get the kids to bike on their own. So that's another consideration. Lastly, if you then think about it in this entire area for one mile distance from this spot, there is no grocery store. So everywhere you need to go to, you need to take car out. So these cars would be going in and out the whole day. Okay, and the last is, if you look at the entire point, from at least one mile distance to the center point, there is no high-rise building whatsoever in this entire community. Neither in the Menlo side, nor on Lindenwood, nor on the Menlo Oaks, nothing. So we are really, really saying that, hey, right in this point where there is no high-rise building, let's construct a three-story, four-story building. So I'm just trying to figure out, how does that make sense? How does it correlate with what we are trying to do with the city? I understand we need to do something about the uh state rules, et cetera. We should perhaps think about, hey, and there is an argument of like, hey, as uh member uh council member Lewis mentioned earlier, that there needs to be rule-based system. So either there needs to be a rule-based system or there needs to be a free market. This is seems like a somewhat arbitrary picking some things. Okay, why there are only four homes being picked? Because but there are five homes in that street. Uh, like, you know, it seems just arbitrary what we are trying to do here. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have no hand to hold a piece of paper, so I will ad hoc this. My name is Elizabeth Jensen and I also live on Frederick Avenue. I am very concerned about these properties on Ringwood and Bay Road for uh the same reasons as have already been um spoken here. But we have, um, I think the the first issue is that of the nature, the character of our neighborhood will change completely. We have high-rise buildings, basically four-story buildings that we will either have in our backyard or across the street that we will see above our neighbors. And I think the biggest concern for me, I've sat here and listened for an hour about how the town's number one priority is the safety of the residents. And I feel like there are a number of important safety issues, having um, all of these high-rise apartment buildings on that corner and along that street. We already have a lot of, well, I think the town council already considered at least a year ago, having speed bumps on Frederick Avenue because there are so many people that cut through and are driving too fast on that road. And when you put uh twenty new units on four different acres, we're going to have all that many more cars driving quickly down a street where there are children, as has been said, that are bike riding, walking um to the elementary school, to the middle school, to the high school. And I I find that that is the most important issue for the town to consider in putting up this many units in on one unsafe five-point um intersection. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for a minute uh to talk. My name is Woodson Martin. My wife Kelly and I live at five eighty Middlefield Road, immediately adjacent to the uh Ravenswood Properties under consideration. Uh, I share the concerns of the Frederick uh folks about the impact to the neighborhood, the character, uh, the safety concerns, the traffic and all of these things, which uh would dramatically, of course, change the nature of the place that we live. Uh, and I think the town. Um, but I also have another concern, which goes to the comment about the arbitrary selection of sites. I've looked at the criteria used to select the sites in question. Um, those same criteria apply to my property, which is adjacent. Uh, if there are three properties adjacent to mine, which have the potential for development and multi-family uh housing, and my property's value will be diminished because it's adjacent now to something very different than what is there today. Um, why wouldn't I want my property to be considered to have the same potential? Um, and I think there's a set, that question applies to lots of adjacent properties. It wouldn't just be ours. But I think there are many homeowners in the area who really question the way the process is playing out. That suddenly there are these three that'll have an impact on us and we should at least understand basic things. What does it mean to be included in a CEQA? Uh, what is that process? How invasive is that for the property in question? Or is it not at all? Um, how are the sites being selected? Um, what are the potential impacts to uh a site that is selected? Um, and I think it's just, we need a little more time than the, you know, few days that we've had since we got the letters and the ability uh to uh get notice about this meeting. And so I think we need to think about whether we have the right list. Thanks.
Uh, my name's Paul McDonald, uh ninety-eight Rebecca Lane. Uh, I got three letters because my backyard is right up against these houses. Um, my family's lived here for four, fifty-four years. The idea of multiple housing on single housing zoning is completely out of character. And with the potential of twenty-two units on one acre, uh, that means what, three, four stories high? Um, then we run into heritage trees. We have, uh, it's a forested area. Uh, it's, it's, it's insane. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Gary George. My wife and I live at eighty-six Rebecca Lane in Atherton. Uh, I've been here for seventeen years. My wife's been in Atherton for more than that thirty. When we came and decided to move to a new house in Atherton, we looked around at a lot of areas there. It's a beautiful community. The one house per acre residential housing has contributed to making this community one of the most sought after in America. I mean, it is just fantastic and we love it. I would like to rephrase the question in that context while agreeing with the others have said and saying it's maybe not a question of where, because I don't think there is a where in Atherton. And as you've heard from these residents, I don't think they think there is a where. Question is more of why. As I see it, we have a bunch of politicians in Sacramento who have decided for their own reasons to dictate the living conditions of the citizens in Atherton. I find that objectionable. Uh, but those same politicians have taken the position on the state and the cities to say, hey, but if we don't agree with a regulation that some higher government authority has given down to us, we'll just declare ourselves a sanctuary city or a sanctuary state and we won't enforce or obey it. These are the same people. Um, I would suggest that it doesn't fit for Atherton and maybe we use the same scenario that has been used so effectively by the state and cities. Could not Atherton be a sanctuary city for homeowners so that we may maintain this standard, this wonderful community that we have? I find it, to use their words, culturally objectionable, culturally unacceptable to try to change the living conditions that we have grown used to and a violation of the safety of the citizens of Atherton. If I might quote from a study done by the Indiana, excuse me, Indiana University uh School of Public and Ameri- Environmental Affairs at Indiana University, Purdue University Indianapolis, it's called Land Use and Violent Crime, published in the Journal of Criminology. Now, it's a fairly long study, so I'm only gonna read three sentences, but it says this. The study found higher rates of all types of violent crime in areas of high-density residential land use, even after controlling for overall population. The correlation was more pronounced in disadvantaged areas, but held true in other areas as well. There seems to be something about, in print, high-density uh residential units that is associated with all types of serious crime, even controlling for the other factors in the model, the authors write. Apparently, high-density housing units promote serious violent crime. Taking these studies into effect, taking the fact of the type of culture we have here in Atherton, the reasons people come here, the property values as they are, I mean, it's costly to be here, let's face it. But it's worth it because of what we've created here. Uh, I think this proposal is anathema to the residents of Atherton and should not be considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Bob Toledo Quail Court. Um, the properties on Bay Road, I can't comment on Ravenswood Properties. The fact of the matter is, council members, the only reason they're on, they're on this CEQA proposal is because we got very little pushback when they were mentioned in earlier iterations of possible multifamily sites. There are other sites that are probably more suitable. But because you've had a lot of pushback, you backed down on every one of them. And that might be the right thing to do at this point in the cycle. But to include these Bay uh Bay Road properties uh just because up to this point there was a little pushback is probably not doing your job.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is, I'm David Mark. Uh, my home is seventy-seven Rebecca Lane. I've been in Atherton for about twenty years. Um, I guess I have a question about process, which is, I sort of went back and I listened to the uh July meeting from end to end, including all the questions. And I still am just very confused about exactly what are the implications of a property being listed in that report. Uh, there was a discussion, I think, in that meeting in July about will these things actually come to fruition, given the value transfer required and uh the complex way the economics uh work out. So the thing that I I found very concerning about this meeting was, you know, you're ha- you're having a discussion around this. You get these lit properties that are listed and then it gets, and then all of a sudden we're now into a zoning discussion. And I don't know that I understand or other people understand, what does it exactly mean for these properties to be listed? And so the process I found to be, I know it's very complex. I know that people are working very hard on it. I appreciate all the work that's being done, but uh as a resident, I found it, I found it very difficult to understand. And the the second thing I do wonder is just, again, also going back to the criteria where that that were used to select the different properties. And one of the concerns I have about the Ravenswood properties is that we're already talking about SRI having a significant development over there. That's four hundred units and then you put another sixty in there. And then in school in the morning, it's already, the traffic over there is already terrible. So like, are you just adding more and more congestion, you know, all into the same area? So I don't know if we're coordinated with Menlo or or how that's going. So that's all I have to say on it. But I know it's very distressing to have the idea a huge building, like all of a sudden, one day, you know, you think it's not gonna happen and then one day you come in and there it is. That's right. So, thank you very much.
Hello, council. I'm back again. Thank you for uh having me and allowing me to speak again. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, I'd like to just sort of address um sort of the policy effort that you went through on developing the guidelines. And it's, it's really kind of disingenuous when you see uh recommendations to include uh parcels that don't meet that uh exercise that you took quite a bit of time earlier in the um spring and the summer at. So if you look at the Circus Club or Bear Golds, they don't meet any of your criteria and here you are discussing them again. So that means you're not listening to us or you're not even following your own policies and guidelines. Number one. I I guess number two is uh CEQA. It it it, from the questions that you guys were asking uh the town manager, it's pretty clear you don't understand. uh, the town manager, it's pretty clear you don't understand the impact of SEQA. And it would be important for you to spend some time uh, understanding that if you broaden SEQA like staff is suggesting to you, you make it easier for development to occur in the town of Atherton. You also make it easier potentially, and, and you know where I stand about the possibility of HCD ever approving our, our plan. But you, you, their argument is that it may now allow you to get a approved housing element. However, it makes it easier for development in the future because the developer can rely on the negative declaration or the environmental impact report that gets certified as a part of the process. So you're making it easier to have more density and you need to understand that and you need staff to be very clear with you how it works and how it'll affect the town. One of the things about some of the properties you're talking about, Bear Gulch and Circus Club in particular, uh, is they're probably going to kick you into an EIR situation. And I know you haven't budgeted for an EIR. Uh, and if you do pursue those kinds of properties, I'm pretty sure the citizens are going to ask for a full blown examination for a defensible EIR at, at some point. And then just looking at the staff report today, I was a little confused because the staff report seemed inaccurate. You, it was raised that you would talk about the smaller portions of those sites, but you highlighted the entirety of the site without identifying any small quarter acre site on Bear Gulch or half acre site there. And so that's not the kind of detail that probably is appropriate in developing the project description that I think you're contemplating going forward. So I think you have some more work to do. I wouldn't be pushed, as you know, by the timeline that the state is arbitrarily set for you of January 31st. I would set a timeline that makes sense for the folks of Atherton and for the town council to do it right, to do it incorporating our wishes. So, thank you very much.
All right, Jeff Morris, I just wanted to follow up on one of Rod's points about the timeline. I mean, I think it's really important that we don't be, let the consultant here dictate the timeline when we've asked for months and months for development standards and still don't have them. When you've, she's now raised the 20 units per acre. You don't know that's a two-story building, a five-story building or an eight-story building. And until someone creates development standards, you're not going to know. So I know there was pushback at 20 per, uh, units per acre on the Oakwood site. And so I don't know why you're considering Ringwood and Bay Road for 20 per acre when no one even knows what that's going to mean to the neighbors. So I think the development standards are the next thing to do rather than worrying about the sites tonight. I would put the whole thing on hold until you create development standards.
Uh, good evening, council members. So my name is Han. Uh, I have been living in Atherton for just over a month. So, um, after I, I heard the news about a multifamily plan, I was shocked. So the reason like why, uh, my family is like Atherton as our, you know, maybe next like many years, because, uh, because it's like reputation and you know, the safety and the, the, the good privacy. So this is the most important thing that like we want to like for our kids. Like we have, uh, two keys, both of them under three. So I live in Frederick Avenue. So if the house plan, uh, in Bay, uh, in Bay Road happens, then I think we gonna like completely lost our privacy. Because even you put like 10 or 20 multifamily home and on one acre in Bay Road. So I think we definitely gonna at least like, uh, over one levels. So it's so easy to just check in our yard. I know it's fair for those people who can like purchase those home, but it's not fair for us like who live on the other side of the fence. And in addition, I feel, you know, during commute hour, um, Ringwood and Bay Road is already, uh, super congested because of South Side and all the school. So think about if like several big, uh, community, community also stayed, uh, stays there, then I think the congestion gonna be even worse. And more and more car can stop on the side of road, on the side of the road. Then I think the, the crime rate can also be increased. And you know, I think like the last thing I want to say is, uh, do we really want to maintain the reputation of Atherton like moving forward? Or we really want to, you know, become a city like some other city in Bay Area, I think like it's, if we keep allowing things happen, then um, maybe from time to time, you just need time to become like worse in Atherton. Uh, maybe not for next one or two years, but eventually like Atherton gonna leave, gonna lose their reputation. Thanks, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room here?
My name is Jim White. Uh, our family has been associated with the, the property that we own on Lane Place for over 60 years. I haven't heard anyone speak tonight about the charter of the Holbrook Palmer Park and how that is based on its being used for recreation. I've kept my comments primarily to the Gilmore House, uh, because it's directly adjacent to our property. But I would see that the recreational use would be very much reduced with the plan that Ms. Bendix has laid out. It would seem that the, uh, the consultants that uh, Mr. Roderick says lined up for the next item on the agenda could be a net, a, a very good way of looking at the entire program of coming up not only with something to satisfy the housing element for the state, but also then to look at the alternatives that are available to us. It seems that the outline from tonight was mostly based on city property. And if we look at that, uh, then why stop at just taking out the Knox School? Uh, there's a maintenance yard in the park. There's a maintenance yard here in the city aisle. So there are a lot of alternatives for additional acreage if we're going to build townhouses all over the, over the, the town. I know that from my own experience that the, the park is part of the heart of the, of the town. We walk there every night and people bring their children, their dogs. And I think that it would change the character of the park to the extent that it would no longer be what people expect. And where would it stop? The, the seventh element coming down from Sacramento might call for additional work. And so there go the tennis courts and then the baseball diamond. Where does it stop? So I would encourage you to look at the, uh, original charter and to decide if there is a a proper way to address that in the context of the, of the planning. Thank you.
Appreciate you addressing the issue. Um, Dave Hepberger, we've lived at 29 Frederick in Underwood since Memorial Day 76. We were of course the youngest at the time. Now we're the senior of the 12 houses on that street. And my one experience that concerns me is the height, the height of what's going to happen is somebody spec developed a house right behind us, which was about two, two bedrooms, one and a half baths. And they built a very tall house. Classy job. And fortunately, some really lovely neighbors moved in. They had one child, now they have four and we've gotten to know them very well. But this is only a two-story house and six people plus people caring for them sometime. And I can't imagine how on Bay Road, there's, how, how are you going to get parking? And that's a semi thoroughfare, even more than Ringwood probably, similar. How are you going to get parking, traffic coming and going? Cause there's no parking on Bay Road. I don't know how that's going to work. And again, we, we see their place, but it's, I, that's progress. And I just can't imagine more than two stories or whatever's going to be potentially tried if you allow this much multi, multi-person development in, in that. And how you, they sort of cherry picked, picked four houses over there. I mean, one of them already has a couple of trucks on it and maybe that was one reason. But we're, we're concerned. We hope to stay there a lot longer.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul. I live on Watkins Avenue and I strongly support Jim and his assertion of the heart of the city is in the park. And if you change that park, if you take away an acre and you put something right on the property line and make it really tall, I think you fundamentally alter this park. It turns into something you can't get back. Next up the tennis courts, next up the daycare. And then you don't have anything else. You're going to be the one place where it's just nothing. No place where people meet. I know all my neighbors, I've got to know them through the park, through walking the park. And normally don't meet 93-year-old neighbors, but in the park we meet each other. We talk, we engage, we interact. In a city full of walls, of fences, it's the one place where people actually meet. That and the library. And that's the two things we really shouldn't trade off. We shouldn't do it lightly. And I, I think you should really seriously consider this. I've listened to many of the meetings, I've been here several times. I see Gilmore Park is out, Gilmore House is out, and then it's back in again, then it's out, then it's back in again. You have to get really concise and structured and think this through. I think you find most of the neighbors don't really want this. And I, I strongly argue to reconsider this. I think it's going to create one end with high-speed trains. Then either end, really tall houses and just a desert in between. And it's something, I just don't think people want. I think you should reconsider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody online, Anthony? Anybody else? I heard that. Okay. I will close the public comment and I want to open it to discussion with council.
Go ahead. Can I ask, um, one of the questions that came up is why we didn't, we aren't simultaneously doing the, the design standards with SEQA? And I was hoping the staff could do some education around that.
Sure. So that, oh, excuse me. Uh, so that would be the next thing that we start initiating. We're looking towards doing a couple of public workshops on the different types of sites, depending on what gets chosen here to look at specifically what design standards we would consider. And that would certainly include setbacks, parking, height, and having a list of potential sites uh, would help frame that discussion.
So what, what would a typical timeline be for that? Cause that would go in parallel with SEQA. They're separate tracks, right?
Sure. So we're hoping to get some workshops scheduled, um, in October. Uh, so we would be, George and I would be picking some dates in the near future and sending out note, public notify, notifications of those workshops uh, so that we can have the benefit of that input as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, one of the residents that came up was saying that implied that we don't understand SEQA and that if we have SEQA, that it's going to open up for development. And we've been, at least I believe that SEQA is just opening up a research and making it possible that no, no thing on this list means it is going to be. So can you explain a little bit more what he was saying and clarify that for us?
Sure. I think what they're getting at is that once you do SEQA evaluation and then you adopt an actual, uh, list of opportunity sites through the housing element, the future property owner can rely on that SEQA document whenever they come forward to do construction. So, um, if there was a requirement for an initial study at any one of these sites to do multifamily, they wouldn't have to do that because it's effectively already getting done. So that's the analysis that's happening right now. It would look at the maximum density that we've said at 20 dwelling units per acre. Um, before we adopt the housing element, we would present that to you so that you have the benefit of understanding what any related impacts to congestion, noise might be at that density before you add it to the housing element list.
Yeah, I think it's super scary for us to hear the density of 20 and then saying, but we're not going to develop that. You know, we're going to come up with something different. And a lot of us were visualizing more condominium, like brownstones, for example, was one of the things we talked about before. That's very different. So if we do the analysis at 20, there's, and later in the future, can someone come back and say, well, the analysis said it's fine at 20? Can this, is there a scenario where it will bite us for having done that? I get the reason why you want to do it. Is there a bad scenario on that?
Only if it was aligned with what was adopted in the housing element.
So only if we that later then said, yes, 20?
Correct.
So if we later said we will only allow a two-story brownstone with, that has no line of sight from the adjacent house, then that would eliminate any further discussion of going up to 20. They can't later say, oh, but the SEQA said we could do 20.
Uh, in the scenario that you're, you're setting forth, I'm less concerned about the design standards, like the two stories, the privacy. I'm more concerned about what the density requirement is. Because the density requirement is what sets what they're allowed to do. We, if you approve a density on a site in the housing element at 20 dwelling units per acre and then we go and we craft development standards that really don't let the site get developed at that scale, that's, that's, uh, not consistent with the law. So we wouldn't be able to do that.
Explain that. That was scary.
If you, um, step in the housing element, a density at 10 units per acre.
Yes, we never studied 20.
It's 10.
It's 10.
No, but the comment from the resident was if you do a SEQA study that shows 20, then there's going to be a whole set of analysis related to the 20 units an acre density. And a developer in the future, totally unrelated to the housing element, totally separate from the housing element, could say, well, there's this SEQA study that shows that there's these declarations and they can use the analysis that way to assert a development.
The builder's remedy.
They couldn't do that unless you authorize a land use designation and a zoning designation that allows for that density. The SEQA analysis doesn't confer any kind of rights to develop at that density. And so if, I think it was George described earlier, it was, we're just looking at this density right now to provide you with options down the line when you're considering the housing element. In case you decide to go with 11 or 12 units.
The concern is not whether it provides rights. I understand there aren't any rights unless you include it in the housing element. The concern is whether it provides an analysis, uh, for why there could be some other development, even if it isn't zoned for that.
Yeah, analysis is analysis, but it doesn't mean that if you pass a law at 10 units per acre, they can build 20.
Does it open the door for builder's remedy?
Builder's remedy is only if we don't have an approved housing.
There are no doors.
Builder's remedy is that anything goes.
The builder's remedy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't. We're in that position right now.
I'll, I'll give some comments.
So can, can I just provide one other clarification? The analysis is only usable if it's a, if it's certified by the council.
Right. And we have no intention of certifying 20 acres, 20 units per acre.
Well, you might certify the analysis at 20, but approve 10 dwelling units per acre on the site.
I mean, that's
but then you would, in theory.
I just want to be very defensive about this. We never envisioned a four-story apartment complex on, uh, an acre, uh, that's looming over anyone's backyard. Like the vice mayor said, uh, we'd always envisioned maybe a two-story brownstone looking development that development that looks like a big house. I mean, there are big houses that are being built that are looming over people's, uh, properties right now. Where to four, it had been a little, a little thirty-five hundred square foot ranch burger, right? One story. And now they're going up so tall and big and just, you know, covering the entire lot. But taking away a lot of the trees and landscaping. So, I mean, it just, you know, the imagination runs wild with all the bad scenarios. But that's not what this council has ever, ever envisioned.
Right. But I also want to make sure that we don't, as a jurisdiction, uh, make a decision before we've done the analysis. That gets us to that decision and SEQA is part of that analysis. And you need to go through that process and then make your decision at ten or eleven or fifteen units per acre. Based on that analysis and what impacts you see that come out of the SEQA process. Not say, we're going to get ten and we're going to make SEQA work for that. Because it's an objective process.
Can I ask a question about the, what we know about the SRI property that's developing and the safety and traffic things are addressing? As part of that implementation and how that would impact the neighborhood? Because we have a lot of people come up and talk about safety issues. So separate what we're doing, they're doing that and they're going to do stuff that's going to, they're, they're talking about new passages, new walkways, new bike rails. Can you kind of summarize some of that?
Do you know about the SRI?
I'm, I am aware of the SRI project. I'm looking back at my colleague, Adam Peterson, um, because he has greater familiarity with, uh, the transportation study component of the analysis we're talking about. And when, if you're speaking specifically to, does the analysis for Atherton's housing element? Taking into consideration future, the future project at SRI? It really depends on how far along that project is. So I can't recall if they've submitted an application. Um, I do recall that there, at one point was talk of including it in their housing element. In which case we would have that density to look at, um, and the parking standards as well, to factor into our analysis for SEQA.
Menlo Park's plan was just rejected for the third time.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, even with that big SRI development, you'd think that they could get a plan approved.
George, can you share some of what you were telling me about in terms of what their plans were in terms of traffic mitigation in that area? And safety issues or no?
I don't know about the traffic mitigation part, but what I have heard about that development is it did plan for public pathways through the project site. To get to their transportation corridor, the train station, basically. As part of that development.
Uh, to the train?
Like bike heads, not, not cars necessarily.
Yeah, it's all in the almanac. Just got to read the articles.
That's right.
Rick?
Uh, so just going back to this issue of SEQA and density. Uh, my concern with it, I understand that, um, we are responsible for rezoning. And if we don't rezone, somebody can't, uh, without a zoning change. Uh, be able to build based on some, uh, larger density. However, if we don't have an approved housing element, which we don't have. And which I don't, I, I mean, I'm going to do everything I can, uh, to comply so that we will. But I have no confidence in HCD agreeing to our housing element. Because in fact, we own no developable land. And, um, and I don't, you know, I, I think it's going to be very hard to get an approved housing element. And if we don't get an approved housing element, we face the risk of the builder's remedy. And one of the detriments to the builder's remedy being affected. And I think the reason that we haven't gotten a builder's remedy, uh, uh, application to date. Is because our land is so expensive. And it is so expensive to develop in Atherton. And if they face a risk around SEQA, which builder's remedies have to comply with SEQA. Then it's an additional cost that the builder has to take into account. And if we've done a SEQA analysis that says you can build twenty units an acre on some property on Bay Road. And a builder chooses to assert a builder's remedy for that property when we don't have a qualified housing element. They could use, my concern is, they could use the analysis that we've paid for. For them to support their builder's remedy at reducing their cost. And I want their cost to be as high as possible. And that's one of the reasons why I believe we haven't gotten any builder's remedy applications. So I want to do everything I can to support that extremely difficult situation where we're. For somebody who would want to assert a builder's remedy. We're not Menlo Park. They have builder's remedy problems. Uh, I'm not saying we couldn't get a builder's remedy. I know we could. We just haven't. And I don't want to do anything I can to support them. So my, my conclusion here is that I think we should limit the density on what we're going to, uh, be submitting to SEQA. Uh, when we looked at the Ringwood and the three Bay Road properties previously. We said we would look at them at ten units an acre. And I think it's a real problem that we haven't put together the objective design standards. Because it's misleading to people. People know, we've talked about, uh, approving zoning for Menlo College. That would include a four-story apartment building for affordable multifamily housing at the college. That we've done. We, we haven't approved the design standards for that, but we've talked about that. We haven't talked about four-story buildings in any of the other multifamily potential areas that we've looked at in the town. And we've looked at, I don't know, five or six. And every time we've looked at them, residents have objected for the reason that everybody's objected tonight. Um, uh, but in none of those situations have, have we talked about a four-story solution?
Never.
Uh, the concept that we've discussed and, uh, granted, we haven't, uh, even, uh, clearly discussed objective design standards. But the only real standard that we've talked about are two-story types of buildings.
Right.
Uh, and I don't think there's will to go beyond that. So, uh, and, and if you have twenty units on it, on a small parcel like you have on Bay Road. Uh, it's going to be hard. You can't put twenty units with, with two-story buildings.
No.
So that's part of the reason that we went to a maximum of ten units an acre, which I think was the right thing. And I think that's what we should do for SEQA. Um, uh, let me, let me, let me go on. Uh, on the POS properties, um,
I think Anders wants to say something. Our, our city attorney, is that what you're saying?
Bill's been raising his hand.
Bill, I was, he wanted to continue.
Keep talking. I'm sorry.
Okay, so, um, on the POS properties, I was surprised to see the small acreage subsections identified in the staff report. Because I thought we talked about, uh, potentially rezoning for SEQA purposes. The, uh, the POS properties without specifically calling out the Circus Club or the Bear Gulch property. But looking at just the POS properties in general, that would be all the properties. Well, I would say if we're, that, that if we're going to do this for these properties. The right thing to do is say they're, the density is going to be a maximum of four or five employee housing units per parcel. I don't care what the acreage is. We, we should look at them as total parcels, not some subsection. And, and with respect to the park parcel, uh, I don't think any, I, I don't think the council has seriously talked about anything other than the Gilmore Houses, the location. Uh, and the last thing I'd want to see is, is some housing put back, way back in the park. Uh, uh, I think it'd be disruptive to the whole park.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, finally, with respect to Ravenswood properties. It's true that one of the residents spoke tonight, uh, talked about how they're only on this list because of SRI. That's a hundred percent true. They're only on this list because of SRI. Because staff said, well, there's this huge development going on across the street from them. If we're looking at places where it would make any sense to increase any density anywhere in Atherton. Which is really a challenge to consider. Um, but anywhere, well, if you're going to end up with five or six hundred new apartment units across the street. Then that's a place where it would make more sense than somewhere that, uh, you know, i- is completely undeveloped in that kind of a way. I, just my final comment, sorry to take so much time, but this is a really complex, really difficult subject. But my final comment goes to a comment that a resident, I think his name was Mark, uh, spoke about in terms of, uh, being governed by the state telling us what we're going to do with our land use. It, that, those comments were absolutely right. I mean, it is outrageous that we are being told by the state how to change our land use. Without any consideration for the impacts of traffic and a whole assortment of different issues. That we have a responsibility to consider. Uh, the, the risk is that if we don't find a solution where we get qualified by the state. Theoretically, the state could take over our zoning and they can do, they, they could change things that we wouldn't have any control over. And that has pushed us as a council to have to deal with these issues, which believe me, we really don't want to deal with. Uh, and, you know, maybe there'll be at some point a change in state law, but this is before us, before anything like that is going to come to pass. So that, the only reason we're dealing with this is that we feel pushed, I mean, we feel forced by the state to deal with it. And believe me, it's easy to say, well, just resist them and oppose them. But the fact is, we, it, we, 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 there are communities in California that are opposing them and resisting them. And they're getting sued by the attorney general in the state. And we're not going to be one of those. We're not going to be targeted. Because if we, if we set ourselves up to be a target, they're going to come after us. There's no question about it. The governor's already spoken to, about Atherton when he was in Hillsborough addressing the ADU issue. He didn't need to address Atherton. We, we weren't out there like Hillsborough was in that case. But we're a target. So we, we have been very careful to be clear that we have absolutely every intention of finding a way to comply with the state. And get qualified by the state so that we aren't that target.
Bill? Go ahead.
Sure, and, um, and Rick touched on this very, very briefly. When we looked at, um, the Bay Road properties. There was never twenty per acre.
Never.
It was never twenty per acre. We discussed, you know, maybe five, excuse me, five units. Maybe it went up to ten units per acre. I don't really recall, but it was never twenty. Which is, you know, raised a bunch of issues with, with the neighbors over on Frederick. Not that ten units per acre may, may not raise their issues with them as well. But, you know, they, you know, when we say twenty per acre, then their imagination can go wild. This is, so it's got to be a four-story building. And as Rick pointed out, we never talked about a four-story building. You know, we talked about that Menlo College could have multi-stories, more than two. Because of the fact that their property, uh, faces across the street to Menlo College property, which is the carton field. So there's not any neighbors that live there. Um, but, uh, then also, you know, as I said before, you know, I don't recall that we ever said, yes, yes, yes. Let's go ahead and improve or put into the, uh, um, uh, the park, uh, over at the, uh, at the play school. Um, you know, as, as you know, Rick and I are going to be meeting with George and Stanford to discuss that. And I don't think we should be putting that stuff out, especially when, you know, right now, I don't believe the council has full approval of doing that. We never took a vote on it. And, you know, we want to make this thing as easy as possible. You already got a house here. We're going to replace the house with something else if we choose to do so. You know, uh, we, we don't want to invoke any ill will between us and Stanford. And so, you know, going with larger numbers and more spaces, I think is a problem. I realize POS is POS, but you've called out the play school. And, you know, that's in a completely opposite part of the park. I think that that's inappropriate. So lastly, I would like to tell all the people who talked about how, you know, we should just tell the state, state, no. I would like to know, like to let you know that, uh, our state legislators, Mr., uh, you know, our senator, as well as our assemblymen are going to be here on Sunday, uh, speaking, uh, you know, and celebrating our hundredth year anniversary. Uh, so if you would like to go ahead and let them know how you feel, Mr. Becker will be here. He speaks right after Anna Schu. And Mr. Berman will speak right after Mr. Becker. So please feel free to let them know how you feel. So, I mean, be nice, but let them know how you feel. Uh, you know, which is what I've been saying when I've gone around to all the neighborhoods. We didn't pass this law. We're not focused on you. And we're not focused on any area. And in fact, there's only one consensus around town of where we should put any affordable housing, if any. And it's anywhere but near me. That's what everybody tells me. I, I don't care where you put it, just not near me. So it's going to have to be somewhere or there's going to be builder's remedies potentially coming up. Now, I know Rick has brought up that maybe the cost of the land, et cetera. But there are some builders that build multifamily homes that already own the land in Atherton. So there's no skin off their nose. Alls they have to do is a SEQA. And, you know, come up with mitigation plans and that's it. So, um, you know, so it's important that we go ahead and we get our design standards done as soon as possible. Because we don't want to have people thinking we're building four-story buildings. We don't want to do that. We want to make sure people understand wherever we do something, even if it's at the park, there has to be setbacks. There has to be, we always said all along and all the discussions that we've had to date on this. That we said, the neighbors' issues are paramount to what we're trying to do here. So if we have to do something somewhere. Then it's, it's paramount that we protect the neighbors to the maximum extent possible. So we, you know, we hear you and that's what our intention has been all along. So, um, I'd like to, I'd like to see, uh, oh, last, last point. On one of these charts, I, I forget which one it was. Um, you showed some, some small parcels of point four of an acre. Well, my understanding is I thought that, you know, to do any major development, we have to be at least a half an acre. So, you know, I don't think we should be putting point four. We should say up to half an acre. And we do have to be clear that, that the Circus Club has said, no, not at this time. As, as the, uh, the water district has said, no, even though they already have some housing up there. And at one time they considered it. Um, but at this point in time, it's, it's just not in their plans. So it is an eight-year plan. And so it's, it's right for us to try and cover our bases because it is an eight-year plan. Of course, we're almost through with year one of the eight-year plan, so it's a seven-year plan. But, but still, you know, lots of stuff can change in the future. They have to attract employees. They have, you know, and part of the problem that the people have is they need to have housing. That's one of the key things. So, you know, to, to be able to afford people, you know, they're not going to drive two hours to get to work to get paid minimum wage. Just not going to happen. They'll find a job that's closer to home. Anyway, so I, I'd like to see the adjustment, as I pointed out, to the park. I'd like to see the adjustment, as I discussed, with the acreage and, and, um, you know, that we, 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 we try and keep to what we've discussed in the past. Not twenty units per acre on Bay Road if we decide to, uh, uh, include that. But what we had discussed at that time. So anyway, that's it for me. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Can I ask a practical question? One of the residents asked about, is it possible to delay this till we do the design standard first? Is that feasible at all in terms of the cycle of meeting our deadlines?
George said no.
I said it's backwards. What should be done first? I think what should be done first, every single other community out there, particularly in San Mateo County, has gone through that identical process. SEQA first, before you submit your certified, your, your housing element. Sequo first, before you submit your certified, your, your housing element to the state. And I don't want the council to handicap the sequo process
Okay.
uh, for us. Because then you're not, you may end up facing a decision later on that you need to do something more in order to get to a certified housing element, and you're gonna find yourself in a spot where you haven't done the sequel for that.
So you were preempting my second question, which was gonna be, can we do it for less than twenty? Just for, to show good faith to our residents, if we don't, if we're all sitting here saying we're not gonna do twenty, can we do the sequoia for twenty? You're saying you're discouraging us from doing that.
I wouldn't recommend it. I'd, I'd recommend you, you keep it at twenty, just so you have the analysis. I totally understand where council member the goal is coming from, that if we get through the sequel process and we're still not to a certified housing element, and then we suddenly get slapped with a builder's remedy, they got something they can point to, but you, you could have that happen now at forty units per acre, sixty units per acre. Which would make it feasible, for sure, in terms of, you know, cost return.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out too, that in the states housing element guidelines, it does, it's actually state law. It does identify Atherton's default density at twenty dwelling units per acre. So that's one of the reasons that we keep coming back with this number, is in the event that we get pushback from the state and they wanna see that default density, and we have to do the hard work of going back and looking at sites all over again in February, March, or April of next year. We do have that analysis.
Stacy?
I had a question, but they answered it, so.
I, um, if I just can say one more thing, because I know many of the residents had said, why did you choose these uh, properties? Um, if we just take the, the four, um, uh, the three at Bay Road and the one on Ringwood, um, they all face outward to Bay Road or Ringwood. They're not like part of the neighborhood of Frederick, uh, facing in. And we felt that, um, because of that access and, um, not part of that interior, um, driving, uh, of the Frederick and Lindenwood uh, properties, that with the setback requirements in our design, you know, uh, design criteria of more of a two-story home-looking development, that it would not be encroaching, uh, on anybody's, uh, backyard visibility. And that, that would be, um, that, you know, something that would be tolerable. Um, the other ones on Ravenswood, similar, uh, the same reason, and because of the SRI. And that with the setbacks from the, the rear to the backyard neighbors, um, could be designed such with landscape screening that you would not be impacted. Because it would not be, you know, a four-story apartment complex, like everybody's envisioning. And so it's kinda shocking to me to hear that, and I wonder, you know, where all, everybody got that idea that, you know, we're proposing four-story apartment complexes on these properties. And that's never been anything, any discussion that any of the council had for those that we were just discussing. So it's maybe the twenty units per acre idea, but that was never, we said from the beginning, that was never what council even envisioned. I know, and I know.
We backed up. We backed off on open, you know, because of their property lot sizes.
The property lot sizes, no, but, but there were some, Mr. Politor, that Okay, fine, yeah.
Yeah, but most of those were sub-half acre.
They were like third of an acre.
That was the big issue.
And so we would have to layer over a, a consolidation incentive to convince HCD that, you know, we would be lenient in assembling, uh, multiple properties, which is
There's a set of criteria that we're using, so not any properties to include in the sequoia.
Yeah.
Perhaps we should just take those criteria, apply them uniformly to the town.
Yeah.
And say everything these criteria gets studied in sequoia.
Yeah.
At this stage, it's not about a selection process where somebody said, well, you know, we're gonna destroy this neighborhood anyway, so make it worse. Which is the way I had to put the SRI comment.
Who's speaking, please?
Yes, can you please go to the mics? I'm sorry, cuz people
Very sorry, my name's Woodson Martin. I spoke earlier. Uh, I simply think that if there's a set of criteria that we're going to use to select properties to include in the sequoia, we should agree with those, you, you should agree what those criteria are, and you should apply them uniformly through the town. So if there are properties that meet those criteria, they should be studied in the sequoia, like the ones that you have arbitrarily selected. That's my suggestion. I think that would be easy to interpret as fair.
Yes, thank you. Yes, do we have anyone online, or? Okay. Yeah, we've already done public comments, so I guess I'm not, I'm, I'm allowing you to be unruly, so. But I wanted to hear what you had to say.
This is your first review.
That's right. That's right. Um, so where are we?
Let's move on and take a vote.
I gotta figure out what we're gonna vote on. There's a lot of changes. I think we should continue this, cuz we need more discussion about it.
That's fine.
Oh, also this is, it's a review and, and pass recommendations back, that's it.
Well, I, I can just say, I'm not gonna support anything more than ten units an acre on this Bay Road and Ravenswood property, period.
I agree.
And I'm not gonna support anything on POS more than four or five units per parcel.
Per parcel because you're being global about it, but I think for the, the, um, for the park, the only place that I would, is the Gilmore House.
Yeah, but that's fine. We, we can manage that.
I, but
But it's per, if it's per parcel, then
No, because you don't want it to be built, you know, on, on second base at the, uh, Little League Park.
I think we're pretty universal on the axing the play school, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we seem to have agreed on that, so.
I've got that consensus, uh, although I, I, again, I would encourage you not to handicap the sequel process by going less than the default density of twenty units per acre.
Uh, uh, I'm not gonna vote for it at the default.
So I, I've got one more note on the twenty unit an acre analysis. Just because we now in our citywide analysis look at twenty units an acre in certain areas, that doesn't equate to the amount of sequoia analysis that might be necessary for a specific project that might come in through a builder's remedy application. So just because we're doing this global analysis right now, that wouldn't necessarily just give a free pass to anybody who's looking to do a builder's remedy project at that density.
Okay.
But the issue is it could be used by them.
On the specific properties that we are designating, A- Anders.
I'm not in favor of twenty units an acre. Or the, or the Knox Play School.
I think we're clear on the Knox Play School portion of the, on Park and a parcel that we control.
Talk about the POS zones, so I can
So, the, the circus club POS zone, I mean, I think it's really clear that only the existing, um, housing, workforce housing that they've got would be the only ones that we would even, that, that they would even consider maybe expanding on. It's that one house on Park, you know, add in an ADU or something, which they can do. But they're, they're not gonna tear down that house and build a four-story apartment building on that acre.
But I think the easy way to do it is to do it by parcel. Is, is if you just treat the whole parcel, the circus club and Bear Gulch, at some point might decide to add a couple employee housing units. Uh, I, I would not support putting that in the housing element. I don't think there's any proposal to put that in the housing element. But I, but if we do the sequel, then we've moved through it, and it both, it gives them the ability, if we agree to four or five units per parcel to be developed by right, it gives them the ability to add those parcels whenever they want. And, um, and it, um, gives support to whatever they already have there.
Do you know that the circus club is only one parcel? Because that, that house, I think, is a separate parcel.
It is one.
There's two, there's two residences on the circus club. One is for the stable manager and the others for the general manager, which is further down Park Lane.
That's not, I was saying, uh, mayor, uh, is it one whole parcel, or is that house on Park a separate?
It's one parcel, just like the park is one parcel.
Yeah, it's just one parcel.
For the analysis, I'd also suggest we keep the density in terms of acres, not per parcel.
Right.
Just for, for consistency and looking across the sites.
I mean, they, they were assembled
The circus club and Bear Gulch have multiple parcels.
They're not just one parcel.
Are you sure? Yes.
That's what, and I, I'm sorry.
So, as Andreas pointed out, it's better to do it on a density basis for, for the POS zone. And the town controls what we do on our parcel anyway.
That sounds reasonable.
I, I just wanted to add too, part of the reason that we're only looking at the specific, uh, the developed footprint of these sites already, like when we're giving you the acreage, not the entire acreage, is because there will be sequoia issues if we have to look at changing the reservoir to housing. So we do, for the purpose of sequoia, also have to constrain that we're not taking, we're not putting housing on existing open space, that we're not, uh, removing a reservoir. We do have to make that assertion, and so by specifying, we're just talking about the existing developed areas, um, that helps us get through the sequel process.
But, but in your, in your staff report, I mean, there's this whole it's all red, the whole
Density is site-specific.
They're, what they're talking about is the, the attachment of the site sheets.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's an error.
This is an error.
We can call that an error, that's just outlining the entire site because it's multiple, uh,
Including the reservoir.
Exactly. So what we would do when we come back, we would narrow that area down to reflect the acreage that we cited, which was point two-five.
Okay. Of which, there's also, there's already housing on there.
But that's, but that, the point two-five is what's analyzed in sequoia. The ten units per acre, or five units per acre, or whatever that density is going to be, is a zoning issue.
So for the POS zoning, you're saying to do twenty units per acre for the POS zones? For these tiny little slivers of
Twenty, yes.
Yeah.
And see, the circus club, you're gonna, you're not gonna do the whole thing like that.
No, it's only in the, the developed area. That's what's being analyzed for the purposes of sequoia, as where the housing could
Right.
The park one, though, has squares in it. The park one had the square.
I remember we continued this item to a future meeting.
I, I, I second that.
Can I ask, if we do that, what will that do to your deadline in terms of meeting the requirements of what we need to do?
Another meeting.
Give me a call, a special meeting.
We should have the design standards first. But you can't do the design standards without identifying the parcels that you're gonna be talking about.
Yeah. So there could be some general design, just, just really general design standards, like, you know, that, you know.
There, there's a consultant who's putting that sort of stuff together in terms of what we're gonna be talking about. Parking areas, ingress, egress, height, setbacks, all those sorts of things, and then they're gonna make their way through a public process. But it's helpful to develop those standards in relation to what specific parcels we're talking about that are included in the sequel process, so we can marry those two processes together. You're not gonna do one before the other, they gotta be done in the order that we're doing them.
I guess what you're asking is to have faith and have the public have faith that to take us at our word that we're not talking about a four-story building, they'll never get there, even though we're doing an analysis for twenty. So
No good emotion in a second.
Before you do that, I want, I want staff to articulate exactly what you're gonna be doing to the town's schedule.
Yes, that's, that was what I was asking, so, so we know what we're, if we go for that, what will happen. What does that mean?
Well, it, it just pushes everything back, which we're already now two months beyond what our target was when we first came on board in May, setting forth a timeline to meet a January objective. So, right now, what we're doing from a sequel perspective is looking at all of the analysis and areas that we can, uh, that aren't necessarily site-specific, um, or because of the town's scale, it would incorporate at large swaths of the town anyway, um. But the longer, the longer that we have this discussion and push it out, the further the additional discussions about objective design standards, the zoning code requirements, updates and feedback from HCD, uh, those continually get pushed up.
If we were to go ahead and tonight, and hypothetically say, alright, we don't want twenty, that doesn't feel right, we do ten, you'd still be able to go to sequoia, and we still, would that affect you in any way? Because I'm hearing that the twenty
You've got a motion and a second. If you wanna argue against it, you can argue against it.
Okay.
But you can't just engage in a discussion with staff and put a motion and a second to the side.
Nice. Some questions, cuz I've never been part of a continuation as a new council member. So, I mean, I get it as a concept, but what happens? Like, we just, it's the same agenda? Or is there like new staff report that's prepared? Like, it's just this again, with no change?
A little of both.
Little bit of both.
Yeah. Because there's questions that we need more answers to.
I'll speak to the motion. So, we face a situation in Southern California where fifty percent of the jurisdictions are two years past their deadline. We are nine months past our deadline. Okay, if we miss January, we miss January. The reality is, we've got a very complex problem here that we've gotta deal with, and we should deal with it properly, and we should take the time to work it through. And, uh, it, it doesn't bother me, I mean, it's not what I want, uh, to miss a deadline, but but I'm very, very aware that there are other jurisdictions in California that are way past their deadlines compared to where we are.
Maybe they could just write them a letter and say, you know, we've had a little delay.
But I'd just like to note that we've lost the mayor on Zoom here, so we're down to the four of you in the chambers.
Oh.
Oh.
Did he sign off, or is, is he okay?
Uh, I didn't see any notes from him in the chat.
He, he, he messaged me that he's gonna need to sign off. He was asking earlier how long I thought it would be.
Oh, no.
But for the items to be continued, it would have to be a vote of three of you to agree to that.
So can you define a little further what that would mean? Would you then, you talked about calling a special meeting, so that we we have a little more time to talk about it, but we don't go throw the whole thing out, wait another month?
Right.
So what's, what's the in-between? What, can we refine what you're proposing?
He's looking at the calendar.
Okay.
No.
We could do it, no. He said that he would, he was gonna be done for the night. He's, he's not well, as you guys know.
Yeah.
We could continue to a date certain, or leave it open-ended.
Let's continue to a date certain.
Yeah, what would that be?
I'll look at my calendar. Next, uh, the twenty-seventh, maybe, or the, uh, fourth, though that's our study session. Or, you know, you wanna, like a week? You're until October fifteenth?
You could keep doing on Zoom, maybe.
I mean, if we properly notice it, you could still participate.
Okay. Um, well, we might have to do it again.
Is this a study, special study session we're talking about, a special meeting, just to address this?
It's an action item, so it would be a special meeting, but it'd be an action item.
Special meeting.
And we would need some clarification as to what exactly you want us to be talking about at that meeting.
Well, this, 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 um, I guess
Well, it's just for clarity, in July, the council already incorporated the Bay Road properties
We did.
Into the sequel process.
We did.
But we didn't agree to the density.
The densities listed on the exhibits as R thirty and below. That's what you adopted.
R thirty?
Thirty units per acre and below.
That's what was on, that's what we adopted.
Is that what, um, HCD is is asking us?
And we can evaluate them at twenty units per acre if you wanna provide that direction, or or less if you wanna provide that direction. I wouldn't recommend that, but you know, policy call for the council.
Okay, so today we're only talking about making decisions on Ravenswood.
Well, we can change, we we could change what we decided on Bay Road too. I mean, I don't think anybody was aware that it was agreed to thirty units an acre.
Well.
That agendas?
Because we should, we should know that, but, um, can we make a decision that it's only ten for sure? I thought that's all we agreed to.
You you can certainly change that direction as the council, but all that's actually on the agenda tonight is the POS zones and the Ravenswood properties. You can include that as part of your direction. If you wanted to approve it this evening.
Well, I think the POS zones we've discussed and we're in pretty much agreement, right?
Well, I don't, I mean.
I think that was five units per acre, max.
Yeah.
So it's two hundred fifty units.
Five units per acre?
In terms of five.
Oh, no, no, oh, oh.
Five units per acre within the.
Per parcel.
Being analyzed as.
And then you guys develop, you pick the sites.
Nothing is changing in the zoning this evening. All we're doing is looking at Sequa and analyzing those particular areas of the parcel. So that one point two five and the point two five of those particular parcels.
So it's only five acres per parcel, not per acre.
The zone, the density being considered is five units per acre.
Overall, over the twenty-two acres?
Overall, but what Sequa is analyzing is.
The subpart. That's why you can't take the subpart out.
Yeah, but it's for the subpart.
Yeah, so we can't take that out. Somebody up here talked about that earlier.
Wait, so.
So that makes it a lot smaller.
Line our motion?
That's a good point. You have a motion on the floor.
It's a month.
Yeah, we have a motion, so we have to.
We'd be delayed by a month.
Well, if I'm gonna participate, yeah.
You could participate virtually as long as we notice it properly, if you're open to that.
Never know, it's not gonna.
I don't qualify for.
Under the prior Brown Act rules. The standard Brown Act rules is all we do is put your location on the agenda.
Like what Mike Lumper said. No, it it really isn't. Um, I think, I think I need to withdraw my second on this, and we need to kind of figure this out. I think of.
Okay, if we're gonna figure it out, then on POS, I don't under, so.
So all we're looking at with the purposes of Sequa is the analysis using the acreage you see on the table there. So for Menlo Park Circus Club, it's point five acres, or Bear Gulch Reservoir, it's point two five. I don't think we need to really talk about the park site. So when we're talking about a density of five units per acre, all we're evaluating that under is the point two five.
Well, and then with the park, if we're removing the Knox Play School, then it's one.
It's just about one acre. Take, take off the four two.
Yeah, roughly.
And, you know, it's certainly not twenty-eight. I I would never.
Well, it depends on what density you set for evaluation. That that table, that column on the right is at twenty units per acre.
Yeah. So Menlo Circus Club would be five, because we're we're changing it to ten, and Bear Gulch would be
Two.
Two, two to three, yeah. That makes more sense to me. And even at ten units per acre, ten units at the Gilmore House, I think is terrible.
Again, that's a site we control, so that's just the sequel analysis, and then what you do with the properties up to the town.
Okay. I see what, I see what we're we're changing.
Okay.
Which I feel better about.
I think, I think that's okay.
Okay, and, um, so.
And and we changed the Ravenswood to ten units an acre.
Right, right.
And we give direction to change the Bear Gulch to ten units an acre from, it sounds like we, not Bear Gulch, but Bay Road. It sounds like we approved thirty units an acre.
You approved thirty units or less for the evaluation.
I must have been really tired.
Change it to the ten, we can look at it that way. Again, it's not a recommendation of staff.
It's, no, it's not staff. We understand that.
What, what was the other one?
So maybe I could help craft that motion, if there's one that's being considered.
Yes.
Bay Road, reduce that evaluation under Sequa to ten units per acre.
Yes.
The POS zones, change them to the five units per acre with the acreages understudied on the table identified in the staff report. And with respect to the park, only evaluate the area where the Gilmore House sits.
Right. I think, I think that's.
Then the Ravenswood properties, also ten units per acre.
Right.
Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
One second. Okay.
Can you repeat what, I mean, George says, I mean, can you just?
The Bay Road properties.
Tell what you're voting on?
So I guess if you took the, um, staff report, right, and it's page two of four. Is that what you're looking at?
That's the table. Table that I'm looking at, yes.
And so you change the number of units on the right-hand column to ten?
Ten units per acre.
It's eleven, eleven, ten, ten.
For the Bay Road properties that were included at the July meeting, the density being evaluated for Sequa is ten units per acre for each of those particular parcels. For the Ravenswood properties, one seventy-five, one eighty-five, and one ninety-seven, the density being considered for those properties for the purposes of Sequa is ten units per acre. For the POS zones, the density being considered for those parcels within the, with respect to the areas being evaluated is five units per acre. With respect to the town's park, the only area being evaluated is where the Gilmore House now sits.
Yeah.
Five units per acre as it's a POS zone.
So they're not lumped into that.
So let me just ask you a question. If it's five units an acre.
So.
And we're only looking at a quarter of an acre at Bear Gulch and a half an acre at the Circus Club properties.
So so two, two, two at Bear Gulch, uh, five at, um.
I think it'd be three at.
It would be three at Bear Gulch and two at the Circus Club?
No.
No, and.
No.
Five.
Five at the Circus Club, and.
Well, it's it's five units per acre, so it's two and a half, so three. And it's five units per acre at Bear Gulch, and it's point two five, so it's two, two. So neither of those sites would be able to add any housing.
Are we?
Right.
Weren't we thinking about doing ten units at Gilmore?
They, they, yeah.
So if we did it at ten units an acre for POS, that would make uh, the Circus Club, a maximum of five and Bear Gulch.
That's what I had originally down here. Three and five.
So you're doing ten for all?
Ten.
It's like a blanket.
Yeah.
So we just took the twenty and turned it to ten? Is that where we ended up with all this?
Right.
Okay.
So with respect to the POS zones, ten units per acre?
Well, I think I wanna give the the Circus Club flexibility. If they wanna add a couple units, they should be able to do so by right.
But that 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 part is part of the zoning later on down the line in the housing element. This is just.
Not in the housing element. We're not, I don't think we're gonna include anything related to them in the housing.
You would, it's it's a general plan change?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a general plan change, change the zoning, that's part of the housing.
Yeah, but they don't have to do it. They are allowed to do it if they want.
Man, we don't have to file it with the state.
We're not. It won't help.
They're not being included in our housing target numbers, but they would be included in the housing element as a zoning change.
Yeah, I think, I think that would approve what they have right now and enable them to add a couple units if they wanted to.
Ten units per acre if you did so, yes.
But we're, it's not, it's maybe ten units an acre, but it's only focusing on for zoning purposes, a half in it, what it, what what's in the table.
Purpose, not evaluative area.
What's in the, what's in the size? The half acre and the quarter acre. Okay.
They were saying all.
We're not discussing those in this, uh, motion here, because they're not on the agenda. So we have to go back and take a look at them again.
Was there a motion for that? For the POS, which would, which would include?
Yes.
The park?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't imagine.
So we have a motion and a second. A motion was by, uh, Councilmember Lewis, second by Councilmember Holland. Okay, roll call vote for Holland?
Yeah.
DeGoya?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And I'll note for the record that Mayor Whitmer is absent.
So that took care of.
You get to announce it.
Yes, it's up to you.
Otherwise, I can go and you guys can take over.
Do you have to go to the bathroom or something?
I do.
Okay.
We're gonna, I'd like to call a five-minute recess, so we can all go to the bathroom and stretch our legs.
Fast math, guys. Acre, it's like, I don't, oh, one, two, five acres. How are you doing?
I'm good. Sunday night. Thank you.
Thirteen, I believe, is that right? Yes, thirteen, City Council Feedback and Direction Regarding Affordable Housing Feasibility Study. Engaging of Marketing Firm to Assist with Housing Element and engaging of a lobbyist firm to assist with the housing element. And I believe George Roderick's city manager is giving the report.
Uh, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. Uh, this one involves three requests for direction from the city council. Uh, the first one is probably the more expensive bit of it. It's the affordable housing, uh, feasibility study. Uh, that involves engaging a consultant to do a report to the council on some analysis on the feasibility of building affordable housing in Atherton, given the land prices and the different sized parcels and and those sorts of factors. This kind of feeds into the town's, uh, already ongoing inclusionary zoning study. And that's why staff's recommending that if you move forward with this, we use the same consultant, BAE Urban Economics. Uh, those two studies would feed together, but it is the more expensive, somewhere between fifteen and seventy-five thousand. Uh, it'd be an additional task order for BAE, uh, and it would complement their existing effort. And it would, it, um, it could be helpful, uh, but it could also say something along the lines of it is feasible for affordable housing to be developed in town. It just depends on a density decision, and that's a policy decision. So it could say, well, it's feasible to develop affordable housing in Atherton on a one-acre parcel uh, as long as the density is twenty-five units per acre or thirty units per acre, and that's a policy decision of the town. And so that may or may not be helpful to us with HCD. Uh, or it could say it's not feasible at any density, given the land value. We just don't know what that report's gonna come out at. Um, but that's the first one. The second one is request for some marketing assistance. We currently use Trepepi Smith for our newsletter. They were used by the town of Los Altos Hills to assist them in their housing element process by producing public, uh, education materials, assisting with community meetings and workshops, uh, writing opinion pieces, writing talking points for elected officials and planning commission, helping staff and council and the community develop a consistent set of talking points and messaging. Uh, they could help us develop a, you know, a couple play, couple-page flyer on our ADU program to help educate the community about what that is, what benefits are to the town. Uh, this would be a time and materials sort of contract in addition to their current tasks. Uh, and they estimate that that would be somewhere between twenty and twenty-five thousand dollars or so. Uh, time and materials based. The third one is for lobbyist assistance. Um, Los Altos Hills also used a lobbyist firm to assist them in reaching out to the state. Uh, state HCD as well as the governor's office, as well as local legislatures, legislators, uh, to help them all communicate together, uh, and drive the message home that Los Altos Hills was doing their best to comply with the state mandate and the state should support them in that effort. Uh, and so they engaged Gonzalez and son to assist them in that effort. I know that firm well, I've worked with them twenty, thirty years ago. Uh, and, uh, they are well-known at the, the state level. Um, they're a family firm. Uh, it's, it was their dad, uh, Joe Gonzalez, who's passed away, he used to be assemblyman. Uh, he started the firm and now his son, grandson and granddaughter actually run the firm. Uh, so they would replace our current legislative analyst support group, RPPG. RPPG doesn't provide lobbyist services for the town. They really just provide update on legislative activity, provide us with assistance in writing letters, mostly related to housing, and keep us up to date of what's happening in the state legislature. Uh, Gonzalez and son would do that as well. Uh, but in addition to that, they would, could be used by the town for any and all issues that we feel we need better representation for at the state level, such as ERAF or any other state legislative measure that we oppose or support. Uh, theirs is four thousand dollars a month of a retainer. Uh, and RPPG is currently twenty-two thousand something a month. So we, it would be the net difference between those two. That would be our increased cost. Um, but I, I recommend that we at least do the lobbyist assistance as well as the marketing assistance. It's pleasure of the council with respect to the feasibility study.
So George, what would be the contract length? Do we have to sign a contract? Is it a year or is it?
For Gonzalez and son, it would be a year contract.
Okay, can we get out of it if we don't feel there?
Yes, it probably has a thirty-day termination.
And the same thing for the marketing assistance of Tripepe Smith?
Yeah, the marketing is time and materials, so it's task-oriented, and so if we don't want to use them anymore, we just don't use it for that particular task.
How do you define a lobbyist contract? What is it that they're actually doing? I can see with marketing, you're gonna say, I expect this, 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 and there's an output product. How do we gauge a lobbyist is doing what they're doing? Do we have assigned tasks or how does that work?
No, it's, it's very, they work on a retainer, uh, very similar to like the city attorney, for example. And we use them when needed. And we fill that gap, whether it's eight issues, ten issues, or one issue, they're gonna get their four thousand dollars a month.
Four thousand dollar retainer per month.
Whether they do something or not?
Correct.
And so we have.
How do we know if they've done something?
We would task them with.
So what would their tax tasks be?
For example, we, we, um, are represented through the Managers Association with respect to ERAF. And there's a couple of counties throughout the state that, uh, receive excess ERAF back. Uh, but not all jurisdictions in the state receive excess ERAF back. So we're not really well represented by the League of California Cities with respect to representing us at the state. We could use Gonzalez and son to plead our case that ERAF is very important to the town of Atherton. Here's what we use it for. They will go up and they will, you know, take one of you with them or go on their own, meet with a particular legislature, legislative individuals that could help pass legislation to protect ERAF or local agencies like Atherton.
Can you give an example in the housing element?
Uh, the housing element, what they did before Los Altos Hills was engage their local legislators. Uh, they went to the state, they met with the governor's office representative from the governor's office, they met with HCD, Paul McGugle, uh, and they pushed the message that Los Altos Hills was doing everything they could to comply with the state housing element requirements and basically told their story. And Los Altos Hills believes that that was very effective and helpful in getting them across the finish line.
I think we need that.
Yeah.
I really do. I really do.
It's another way for the town to stay a little bit under the radar, but still have the representation we want at the state level.
Okay, those are our questions.
Do you have any questions?
Public.
Does the public have any comments?
Okay. On. Okay.
Okay, any outline?
Okay.
So, I can go first?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, on the marketing from, firm front, we definitely need help with public education. There's so many questions about why are we doing this? What is SEQA? What is all this stuff? And I think we need to have a lot more produced materials to help people along with this process. And the staff needs help on that. Um, so for me, that's a no-brainer. The lobbyist to me is also a no-brainer, that we need help advocating for Atherton when new laws are coming. Here, um, on the feasibility analysis front, we just had this big discussion wanting to do ten units per acre. And I don't think this feasibility analysis. I'm trying not to put us in legal trouble here, but I'm concerned that they would suggest that that's not feasible and that would then require us to consider higher densities. Or would give HCD ammo to say, you have to then, yes, your land is expensive, therefore you have to do this level of density because we have it in writing to kind of force us in that path. And so I would rather let developers make those own decisions on their own, buy lot, buy properties, and that we handle the zoning and they handle the finances is my perspective.
I totally agree with Councilmember, uh, Hollins.
Well. Okay. Couple, couple things, um, on the marketing, I think the most important thing that we need is somebody to really write a robust ADU plan. So that residents can focus on exactly, I mean, what we've, the staff has done a pretty good job of partnering with HIP Housing. And publishing that in that we had a, uh, meeting where HIP Housing presented, and I, I thought they did quite well. Uh, but there's not a defined plan that, that lays it out to people. This is the way it's gonna work. You, um, we need you to rent your AD, to build ADUs and to rent your ADUs as you've agreed to do in the survey, um, for these reasons, as part of our housing element. And this is how it's going to work. And that lays out what HIP Housing is doing, what we, what we could do with Stanford and with, um, uh, with any other local school that's looking to help place people.
Right.
Uh, so I think that would be extreme, and staff isn't able to write that.
Yeah.
And I think that, so I'm a hundred percent in support of that. In terms of the lobbyist assistance, I think the biggest deal is, hey, they really helped Los Altos Hills. Los Altos Hills is qualified with HCD. And, I mean, granted, Los Altos Hills had the benefit of this, um, builder's remedy solution. Got this multifamily housing going in. Uh, but I think that from, from my conversation with George, these guys helped Los Altos Hills completely separate from that.
Okay.
Uh, position them with HCD. And I think if, even if they don't do any of the stuff with ERAF or, or the other stuff, we'll, we'll get the benefit around, uh, the housing element if they can get us qualified, that would be awesome. Because I think HCD is more open to us than they were initially. And I think the more we are able to position our situation where, I mean, we're in a very unusual position because we don't have any developable land. That's very different from,
Yeah.
you know, even, uh, Woodside and Portola Valley.
Right.
Uh, and we need help with that. With, with, with respect to the, the feasibility study, I hear what you're saying. I mean, I, I think that, um, I, I, I think the issue is really what happens with twenty units an acre? Because twenty units an acre is the default that the state has for Atherton, for communities our size. And we don't, you don't have to do analysis if you use twenty units an acre. Uh, I don't know how, I mean, I, I, I'm interested in what your opinion would be. What, what, what if we get, the feasibility study is done and they do it and they go, it, it's not feasible? To, it's not economically feasible to buy land in Atherton and build multifamily units at twenty units an acre?
I think if that's what the outcome of the study was, I would look to what the findings are that support that and identify ways that we can maybe facilitate that development instead. So in one of the, uh, documents that was an attachment in your packet, um, they listed out criteria that raised the price of housing. Uh, and that included fees associated with development, uh, the inclusionary requirement. Um, I don't necessarily think that was called out, but I noticed it in some of the models that they were running was ground floor retail requirements, but that's not necessarily something with Atherton. But the idea is that when they presented a case that here is challenges or this is infeasible, they identified reasons why. And if the, the reasons are similar across the board, we should be able to look at it and then try and work at what that issue is. But to Councilmember Holland's point, that could be density. And that could mean that we're going back and we're looking at, okay, well, our density is too low, we need to go back, redo SEQA and raise it.
So.
So.
I'd rather not have that.
Yeah, so what if they came back and they're like, twenty units per acre, not feasible? Wouldn't HCD just say, so increase your density? Like, that's, uh, we don't want that, like, you know, it's, I don't know that HCD is sympathetic to our desires for height restrictions and stuff like that.
So, uh, in your opinion, if we had an analysis that said that twenty units an acre wasn't feasible, I don't think it's gonna be because of the inclusionary fees. I think it's principally the price of land. I mean, they'd do an analysis, so you, you're spending ten million dollars an acre for land. You have to hold the land for a certain period of time while you're developing, you have development costs. And you build a, uh, twenty-unit, um, you know, whatever, town, townhouse development on an acre of land. And it, it, and with twenty percent being affordable, it's not, uh, economically feasible. Uh, the, the costs are too high, uh, for a developer to do it.
I'm sorry, I'm a little distracted by the chatter. Can you please, uh, quiet down a little bit? I can't follow, um, Councilmember DeGolia's logic.
So my question is if there was an analysis that set, because this is sort of, I mean, we don't know because we haven't done it, but this is what we anticipate is that the cost of the land, the holding costs and the development costs and the requirement that at least twenty percent is built, uh, is offered at, you know, a low or very low rate, uh, so that it's affordable, uh, by HCD's definition. Uh, if that's not economically feasible, uh, then would, how, where, what would their conclusion be? Would it be, well, then you need to increase the density?
The inclusion, uh, the conclusion from HCD?
Yes.
Um, it could be that you need to increase the HCD. It could be that you need to, uh, lower your inclusionary threshold. So if you set the threshold at five units and you're not actually getting, uh, affordable housing based on whatever that, that level is because of an issue with land costs, uh, maybe you lower that bar, uh, or you raise it. It's, it really depends on whatever the issues identified at precluding the development are. And that's, you know that that's how HCD is gonna react because you're already required to look at development constraints in the housing element and identify them, and then come up with programs for how you're going to resolve those barriers.
So my question is, what is the benefit of this? We, we've all articulated what the risks are. The risks are that it's not gonna support or it's gonna make it look like we have to change our policies, that the problem is our policies. What is the benefit? What's the best thing that can get, come out of this?
Of the, of the new feasibility study?
Yes. Just the feasibility study. We seem to all be agreeing on the latter two. So we're talking about the feasibility and everybody's pointed to the disadvantage of doing it and then having it not come out the way we want. So what is the advantage of even doing it at all? Is, that's gotta be better than the risk of getting it and having it be wrong.
Haven't we already done some feasibility studies?
We, we're doing the inclusionary zoning, uh, fee study, and that touches on it to some degree, but not, not to the degree that it was raised for this particular purpose. It was raised for this purpose, it came from a, a resident. That we could raise it in the air and say, look, it's not feasible to develop in Atherton. Land values are too high, the buy-in cost is too high. Whatever the issues are, it's not feasible to develop affordable housing in Atherton.
At twenty units an acre.
Or at any.
Well, we'd like it if it was at twenty, because then we can argue it has to be less. So, yeah, that, it was the Jeff Nor, that group.
Yes.
Had the proposal, does anyone?
Those are the attachments that it, it originated from.
Okay.
Are attached to the staff report.
Go ahead.
I just don't think that this is the like golden bullet, that it is being a hope, silver bullet, whatever, that's supposed to be protect, you know, solving this problem. Because I think the expectation would be raise your density or find a way for us to create a fund to make it affordable. And neither of those are things that I think we want to consider, start problem solving for now. Uh, so I think it's just inviting some.
So the benefit of being able to hold that piece of paper saying, see, I told you so, it doesn't count?
They're not gonna be.
Is not stronger than.
You're, you're exempt from a housing element, like.
No.
So the, the benefit, so we're, I'm hearing people say that it sounds like the benefit of, of having that piece of paper is not, the, the downside is worse than the benefit.
That's my assessment, but I have got one vote.
Well, that's my assessment also.
Can we talk about each one separately? Are we all agreeing on the marketing? That one sounded universal.
The marketing and the lobbying.
And the lobbying. So, it's, so now the last one is just this one. So, well, does anyone have a motion or a position or?
Well, is this an action item or direct?
It's a direction to staff, and then I'll, I'll come back with a budget amendment to address them.
Oh, so it's not, so we don't have to vote on it?
But it's directions, yeah. Yes, move forward with this. Uh, the latter two, I can sign, so within my signature authority, uh, but the, um.
We need a motion on the,
Yeah.
on the affordable housing feasibility study, which I don't think we are in a position to.
Did I, can I call for public comment? Because I believe, do you mind going to the microphone though, please? All right, thanks.
Uh, the, the marketing piece, I think is a no-brainer, you need help. The lobbyists, housing element aside, might be the right thing to do because of ERAF and VLF in Lu, uh, which are real big deals to the town. Uh, and there's absolutely no upside in that feasibility study. It, it, it would be crazy to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, please.
I would like to make just one slight, uh, comment on the housing prices, which is that I was just doing some homework on Zillow right now as we were talking about it. Uh, the, for example, Bay, uh, Road Corridors, they are about five million to six. They are not ten million, so. Acre, yeah.
No, no, they're an acre.
They are an acre each and they are five million. So even at ten units per acre, it's about like, you know, half a million. So now all of a sudden, uh, you can see builders incentive because, uh, buying, like, okay, at ten lots, units basically per acre is about four thousand square feet. So buying, uh, they can just sell the land at, like, you know, three, two, two extra price, basically saying like, hey, eight hundred K for four thousand in this area is absolutely imaginable. That already happens in Menlo Park. Uh, so to me, uh, somewhere, we, we went with the previous motion at a ten units per acre. But if we actually look at the land prices, because the smaller the land is, the more expensive it can be. The math is not linear in there. So it just feels that we are still inviting builders to go build ten units in the backyard. It's gonna happen at the way it's currently positioned. At the way it's currently positioned, I just.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Only if the property owner allows it.
Yes, o- only property owner sells it, but, uh, honest answer is if it's a. Either it's a free market in the sense that everyone has some option, or here we are arbitrarily picking winners and losers. So, because this property owner might say like, oh, I know this is gonna sell, so if I'm gonna sell it to builder, I'm gonna sell for eight. And the builders make two hundred K per thing, per lot, so. To me, it just feels unfair in the system because, and the land is not linear, this is something, when we bought it, I did a very simple math, I was like, okay. If we can buy it, let's go buy a big lot, because that's, actually, Menlo Park homes are just, you have to pay few million dollars extra and you get a three X bigger lot. Right, so that's the math, all of us did, and I think the same math will apply in here, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, one last public comment.
So I think, uh, one and two are no brainers, as you guys have already concluded, I think having a lobbyist on behalf of the town is. Important, it's something that I think we've encouraged for some time, I think the third, um, um. I- issue is a little more complex, I think since you have a lobbyist, what you need is ammunition at some point for them to go around and talk to legislators. And probably our approach is gonna be, you need to buy into our ADA, ADU program. Um, and they're gonna say, well, why don't you just build multifamily hu- housing? And so if you have some sort of documentation that says, look, our ADA program can work. But the multifamily housing only works at forty units per acre. That's not our community, you, I mean, you can't in good conscience look at us, so it gives us the ability to have a conversation, I think. Or our lobbyists to have a conversation, so that's the only upside I see it to it.
Of the feasibility study.
Yeah, feasibility, yeah, thank you.
I say let the lobbyists tell us they need that.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion on this?
It's direction.
Yeah.
It's just direction.
It's, it's direction on the other two, which I've got, uh, with respect to the affordability study, you don't wanna do it at this time?
Not, not at this time, not at this time, okay.
Probably makes sense to talk to the lobbyists.
Yeah.
Okay, so can we move on?
We, we make a motion to not do the feasibility study.
I thought, do we have to make a motion?
You don't have to.
You don't have to.
You don't need a motion for that now.
Alright, we're good, okay, fourteen.
During the meeting.
The last one, pickleball.
Oh, my god.
Pickleball pilot at Holbrook Palmer Park.
I thought it was done.
So, uh, we have a port.
Okay. It's late, how short do you want it?
Really short, sorry, you were so tight.
Okay, in that case, um, you have the staff report in front of you, if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Uh, I have a question, there's so many variables. Two, lot, two, um, courts instead of four.
That was the recommendation from, that was the request by the council at the last meeting.
Okay, so we can change our mind on that right now.
Can you do four?
You can do up to four on one, yes.
You can, you just buy extra things.
Well, we would stripe two more courts, buy two more nets.
But it physically fits.
Uh, I believe so.
If it phys- does it, if physically fits, you can do it if you want it.
I haven't measured it, but I believe so, there's many courts that do that.
I have a question, why, can you explain why we're painting? Because if we change our minds, then later we're gonna have to resurface that whole thing.
So right now, the courts are striped for tennis only, the line sets are different for pickleball.
Yeah.
And so when we overlay it, um. It's recommended because, predominantly because of the duration and use, that you paint the stripes down.
For six months, we couldn't use tape?
If you use tape, you run into a whole bunch of issues, one is tape wears down pretty quickly. You have rainy season and other things coming up, it also, as it peels up, could cause trip hazards for tennis players as they run across the court line.
Okay.
Um, it also leaves sticky residue and a few other things, so the recommendation is to stripe. In paint, whatever it is that you want, those lines can stay as long as you want. Um, through the duration of the trial, and if it's decided that you wanna leave four courts on top of. The tennis court or two courts on top of the tennis courts, you can leave it. The only time that you need to resurface the court is if you wanna change what it is, whether you change it completely back to tennis. Or you decide that you want to have it as just pickleball, then you would just resurface the court and stripe it as pickleball courts.
Is there any way you can have a key system? Cause right now, in order for someone who isn't, let's say you have a person who's just a pickleball player. They're gonna have to buy a hundred dollar tick, uh, key for a six month period, could we offer, is there any scenario where you can offer prorated? Six months just for, and you can only use it?
Um, at the council's direction, we can do whatever you want.
But I, I understand that, that, that means if the per- if you sold it to them for six months, it's not gonna stop using, it's an electronic, so.
It's.
Don't vet them to ask them what sport they're gonna play, they're buying a key for access to that site, basically.
So, it's not a court by court access, the key is to all the.
All of them, so.
And so, a person, a resident or a non-resident can buy a key to access. The courts and the reservation system. And so, right now, the residents pay for access to the courts, tennis. Whether it's for, for right now, our residents get access to both the clay court and. The, um, regular courts at one price. Um, non-residents get a key to access the regular courts and then have to pay separately for clay.
But we, and we could vet them when they come in to determine if they're buying a new key. Whether they're buying it just to play pickleball or whether they're buying it for tennis, that is something.
But it doesn't, it doesn't preclude them from using that key, cause it's the same.
They could still play tennis.
They, they can still use that key to access tennis courts, and if somebody has a tennis key, they don't have to buy another key.
So, you know, why do we care?
Well, the reason being is it's not a fair study, because the, the thing is, you're not measuring someone's interest in pickleball. Cause that means a person who buys a pick, if you wanted to buy it just for pickleball, you're paying a hundred dollars for six months. As opposed to a hundred dollars for a year for tennis. So that's how, but I don't know how you can physically turn the key off, you can't, so you're gonna have to.
I mean, the, the only thing that, it, at your direction. If you wanted to say, okay, once we start this trial, for the limited period up until we swap the keys out, I think it's in. January or February, that it's prorated with half the cost.
That would be, that would at least get at.
But that would be applicable to whoever buys it.
Yeah.
We're not gonna discriminate one type of user versus another.
Well, because we.
So, the, the other thing to note is that with the way that the trial has been set up based on the last set of directions. We gauge usage by reservations. We don't have anybody manning the courts, counting or anything like that, somebody reserves the court for the pickleball. It's reserved for pickleball, we won't know if, if one person makes a reservation, we won't know if they're playing a two summer or four summer. Same way that if somebody reserves a tennis court, we don't know if they're playing singles or doubles.
Yeah, I guess.
Kay had written us a, uh, uh, an opinion, did you get Alex Kay's, um, comments? I thought he made some really cogent, uh, um, comments, I, I can't remember it right now.
We should take public comment before we get into comment.
Okay, is there any public comments?
Can, can I just note that Noah Eisner during the meeting sent in a public comment? Um, he's on the east coast and he couldn't make it to this evening tonight, so I'll forward those to you.
Okay.
Um. And Walt had his hand up, but it's.
He didn't, I'll, I was, I told him I'd give him the floor once public comment was open.
Okay.
My name is Bob Roser, I still live in Atherton. Um, putting two courts on is eight people, putting doubling it, sixteen people on one court, on one tennis court. With pickleball, if you double number of pickleball courts. Okay, and the reason that's the problem is the problem with pickleball is noise. It's a very high pitched noise, it's a noise that the brain doesn't like, and it's the reason that there are. Uh, town councils and being sued and, and different peoples. Uh, organizations being sued, because they put the courts too close and they put them on tennis courts and the courts are already close to houses and. Different things, they say nothing of the tennis court, players that are playing next to the court, if you had four courts on. Four pickleball courts on one tennis court, you would have quite, quite a, a noise issue. And that's the big problem people have had, where they put them away from, uh, courts and away from houses, they haven't had that. That same, that same problem. Um, about ten years ago, the courts were bought by Atherton residents, not paid for by the town. And they donated them, of course, and, uh, about ten years ago, the, uh, town council at the time asked. To us, asking people to look at what we could do to increase teaching and increase people playing tennis. Which is, were both good, uh, good things. Uh, we interviewed a number of, of places and people, and we found Player Capital, Michael Jessup is the. Guy who runs Player Capital, and he has five coaches that he uses to teach, um, the tennis. He does a great job, he's easy to work with, he's flexible about court usage, if somebody's not using a court even though they signed up. He makes it out that you always get yourself a court, if there's any way he can make one available, and he's easy to get along with. Um, there's two things I'd like the council to consider as they look at this, uh, this issue. Uh, one is, you should read the, uh, current Player Capital contract. Um, I think it's important to read that because he's gonna be one of the people that's really gonna be influenced by having one less court available for tennis. So, if you could read his contact, the latest contract, that would be great. Uh, the second thing is, the, whatever is done for trial for pickleball should be written down. It should be in a document that said, these are the things that are allowed, they have to buy a key, uh, they have to reserve courts and follow any other things. That the tennis players have to follow to be on the courts, and then you'd have an idea of what is. We're kinda okaying for the, uh, trial to take place. So I think it would be good for everybody to read that before they make any decision on what we're gonna do, and at least they'll know. What kind of issues that, that are raised, and, uh, that there, there won't be a number of them and we'll have to work through each one. So, um, I just wanted to say that to you, and, uh, I'm gonna stop right now, because I know. Everybody's kinda had it for this evening, so thanks very much for listening.
Thank you.
Well, yeah.
Comments?
There's a.
Walt Robinson.
One second. Mr. Robinson, yeah.
Yeah, uh, yes, were you gonna read the Noah Eisner's comments?
Uh, I can summarize them unless you guys want me to read them full, it's, it's not short.
Okay, well, I was just gonna comment, uh, that, uh, I'm vice chairman of Park and Rec, of course, I'm speaking on my. Own, we did make our recommendation, the council adopted, uh, that. And it did modify the hours of the trial, uh, this was to be a trial. And that's the reason why the one thing I believe we did recommend is temporary taping. Um, I, I don't dispute what's been said, except I've seen a lot of temporary taping used. Um, and our thought was that, A, it's a trial, so I may wanna pull it off, B. Um, we weren't sure where it might end up in the future, uh, there's some suggestion might take the. Uh, the rather unusable clay court, make that into pickleball in the end, uh, all that would change. Uh, thirdly, we are trying to accommodate Player Capital, we did make a recommendation to council separately. Uh, strongly, strongly suggesting that we found Player Capital to be a tremendous benefit to the park and to tennis in general. Um, and so, uh, they do have a need, a number of courts, it leaves only two usable courts for the. Uh, sometimes for the people that have a key, we're taking one away from them for pickleball, uh, but they still need to use that. And therefore, we should, I think, confer with them, maybe through Michael, I think he understands the process. What kind of taping, what kind of re ta- repainting would work? It's clearly confusing for tennis players, everybody admits that, so the question is, what's the least damaging? That we're gonna do to the tennis players. Uh, lastly, we did not recommend baffling, because we thought that would be sorted out as we, uh, went through the trial. Um, I think frankly, uh, from my point of view, it's a good idea. Um, uh, th- there's a lot of problems with, uh, with sound, as you probably know. And the circus club that's rec- that's, uh, referred to in your analysis shows you the major problems. Um, I don't know how the houses that are closest to where we're gonna do pickleball. Uh, compared to the ones in Atherton, but, in the circus club area, but I have a suspicion. Uh, that's going to be very similar, so, uh, you can see the comment was that, uh, no matter what baffling they bought. And I think they tried twice, it was ineffective, now I think we're gonna put up the same baffling, it looks like, if we can. From the circus club to save cost, so I think all that suggests it's a temporary trial. Um, and, uh, we did look also at the key issue, I think Mayor Widmer particularly. Uh, directed that he thought it'd be a good idea for people to pay for it. I thought it was a good idea to have them reserved, because I'd like to know how many residents are playing here. I won't be able to tell that entirely, because a resident can bring a non-resident. Um, but at least we will have a good, uh, a good, uh, sample of what's really going on here. Uh, so anyway, that was the, uh, that was the approach and, and that's my view, so I think I would recommend, A, that, uh. People talk to Mike about, uh, the striping, uh, and if you have any other candidates to talk to as well. Uh, because I think that's still an issue, I think you're still gonna have a very, very difficult issue on baffling. But there's no way to solve that, I'm gonna get into it, give it a try. And we did look at a number of, of, of other areas that had baffling issues, there was some information submitted. Lot of information on decibel levels and the difficulties of, of, uh, trying to, uh. Get the sound down to something that is satisfied, not just to neighbors, but to people walking in the park, you heard somebody earlier talk about the park. And, uh, what, what its nature is, and the fact we have events there that earn the town money, we have to think about that too and the noise. But anyway, those are things to consider, thanks very much.
Do we have anybody else?
No.
Uh, okay, so, I've been in all the Park and Rec meetings on this subject, which have been lengthy and. Um, and there's been lots of opinions, that the issue of four courts versus two courts, uh, for the pickleball trial. Has been discussed at length, and, and there were really two reasons why Park and Rec supported two. Rather than four, number one was the noise, the amount of noise that getting sixteen people playing on a court versus. Uh, A, uh. On a tennis court, uh, is, is a big difference in terms of the number of people, because the noise is not just the pickleball, which is noisy. But it's people, you know, getting excited and.
Having fun.
Having fun, and.
God forbid.
Well, okay, so then let's just change the whole park, I mean, the reality is, we've got tennis players. That play there very regularly, and if you look at the schedule, there's, you know, uh. A lot of tennis players signing up to the courts that Player Capital isn't using, and. If you have sixteen people on a court playing pickleball, it's, it's going to be very disruptive. And that's why Park and Rec supported only two courts rather than four courts. Um. Uh, I just think culturally, i- it's gonna be very different, cause pickleball is very social compared to tennis, which is much more. You know, a, an athletic event, and pickleball is a combination of ath- uh, an athletic event and a social event. And, uh, I think we have to be sensitive to what we currently have at the park. Um, so, uh, that, you know, so I think there was sensitivity to tennis players around that, as well as concern. For how much noise there would be to the neighbors, and, and that's really why that came out that way. Um, I think that there, there's also an issue, the tennis play- players have paid for those courts. And, you know, they pay for them with their fees and with, uh, now Player Capital, which has been a godsend for us since we brought them in. I mean, we didn't have anybody covering the costs of the tennis at the level that Player Capital. We didn't have anybody covering the costs of the tennis at the level that Player Capital is now. Um, and we'll see how much interest there is in pickleball. And if there is, then I think that. Pickleball players, you know, that they, they, we should build a, a court for them. They, we should enable them. I mean, the best court in my opinion is the clay court, enable them to take over the clay court and rebuild that court. I mean, that was a donated court and pickleball players can donate the. Cost of converting it and, and have it. And hey, if. Um, and, and I think we will learn a lot from the trial. Um, I think the other thing that, um. That Alex suggested was to have no fee for people who were going to be in the pickleball trial. And I don't think that works. I mean, you, you just can't have the tennis players paying a fee and pickleball players paying no fee. I think the, the issue of, um, you know, a six month trial.
Pay double, yeah.
I mean, you, we could discount it. We can ask people if it's, if it's, you know, what they're doing. And then you can have tennis players say they're buying a pickleball.
Yeah.
Sure. I think, I mean, the tennis players are going to be. On this trial journey with us too. Why don't we make all the keys free or discounted as a. Thank you for tennis players for being on this journey with us and also incentivize pickleball players. I know we have to have keys, but I'm just wondering if there's some kind of, um, good gesture that we could be making to tennis players. As, because this is temp, this is a trial. Like we're fully expecting pickleball will ultimately get.
If you make all the keys free, you're basically saying pickleball is more important than tennis. And tennis has been a culture in this.
Count for everyone just because it's a weird, you know?
I, I don't think that's right.
Well, remember 80% of the people wanted this.
I, I don't know if we've looked at converting the locks to electronic locks.
That's an interesting idea.
We have, we have, yeah. I mean, if, if we were to convert them to electronic locks, that would give us control that we don't currently have.
How does it currently work? I buy a key and when I buy it, is it started at the day that I purchase it or is there a start and stop day?
We send a message to the Player Capital tennis folks and then they create an account in the reservation system. And I think that happens within about 24, 48 hours. Um, and then you can make a reservation to go and.
For a full year from that day, so.
No, no, it's up until, so every year we change the locks or change the key. Um, in January or February. And so basically you're, when you buy the key, it's good until. We change those locks.
If I buy it in December and it changes in January, do I still pay a hundred dollars for that one month or do I pay?
Pro rate it after a certain date.
What's that date? So.
I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it's normally like when there's six months or four months left, something to that.
So we already pro rate it, so.
It, it's pretty close to that. That's why I'm saying is that. We can prorate the, the key rate or do a 50% key rate. You know, when this thing starts, but that key, that sale price is going to be across the board. It's not going to be for a year. It's going to be up until.
We change the locks.
Change the locks.
But, but let's say if the trial starts in January or December or whatever, um, it probably good until. Uh, 25, till we change the locks in 25.
If you buy it in January.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you, let me say this.
We, we could ask people why they're buying it. If they're buying it for tennis, they, they pay the tennis fee. If they're buying it for pickleball, they pay half that fee.
No, the thing is, is that that same key allows the user to use both courts.
Yeah.
So. It's better to say this is the key rate.
Yeah.
And you can use, you can reserve and use any type of court or whatever you want. And so you want to use it for tennis one day, you can make that reservation if on the weekend during that. Uh, a lot of time you want to reserve pickleball.
Hear what you're saying, but we're trying to find pickleball players or we're trying to assess the interest of pickleball players. If they, if I as a pickleball player and I don't play tennis, if I have to pay a hundred dollars for a six month trial. The other guy's getting, he's paying a hundred for a whole year that he can use it. So that's the argument for prorating it. But you're right, you can't control, you have to have a faith thing that they're not going to do it.
Trial ends up being successful and we continue, like, right, let's just say we keep court one as two pickleball courts. You've bought a key, you're going to use it for a whole year. So it's not necessarily only six months. It's only six months if we decide that the trial fails and we get rid of the pickleball. Then it, then.
Yeah, we've never even said what a success looks like.
I guess we could say if somebody wants to return their key, we could give them $50 back.
There you go. That's a good answer.
But yeah.
That's a good answer like that.
Is when they come to buy the key, you can say, are you buying this, you know, because you want to play pickleball or tennis? And put a P on the key somehow, write it, you know, so that you know. And then they bring it back and say, well, I don't want to do it anymore.
That's possible, but I, I actually think the better solution is charge everyone the same thing.
Yeah.
Yes.
They pay a hundred dollars, let's say for the fee. And if we decide to end pickleball, which.
Yeah.
You know, if it's successful, we won't do, but if we decide to end pickleball, bring back your key and we'll give you 50 bucks.
I love that. I think that's a great solution. And that, that, that equals the playing field for those who just play pickleball. Now we're getting assessment of their level of interest. So that, that was my issue with it and that solves it.
And is it just a hundred dollars?
Yeah. I mean, it's not a lot of money. Okay. So what else, what other decisions do we have to make?
We have to sign on.
Oh, I have one more suggestion. So George and I went through the calendar. And looked at the tennis reservation. And when, uh, the courts are fully reserved, there's, there's frankly, only one day. Where the courts are fully reserved right now with tennis and that's Saturday. Um, and the proposal is for nine to 12. Nine to 12, seven days a week.
And then.
And four to seven, two days a week. Um, and I think the only serious conflict with tennis players in that is. The nine to 12 on Saturday. So I would say it'd be better to say pickleball, nine to 12.
Sunday.
Sunday through Friday and four to seven on the two days that we said.
Tuesday, Thursday. Again, you're biased again because people, everybody plays pickleball or tennis, whatever your sport is on the weekend. So if you're not giving them some of the, the prime times, you're not, they're not taking up the whole area. They're only taking up one court. So it's not, I mean, as far as the study goes, you're not getting it there. Try, I'm just trying, if we're looking at a study to measure the level of interest, you have to level the playing field. So that you can, uh, you see what I'm trying to say? And that's the optimal time. So if you say to pickleball people that work nine to five, that you can't do it on the weekend. You might as well not even be offering it to some people because they won't be able to do it. So I don't know what the compromise is.
And there are times on Saturday where there is no pickleball, right?
There's times on Saturday where there's no pickleball after.
So there's.
Oh, so you'd have to do morning.
No pickleball after 12. It'd have to be in the morning.
Is pickleball a morning sport or an evening sport?
It's a, it's an all day sport.
All day sport.
Nine to 12 was good. I mean, and.
You feel like tennis is.
I mean, the comments at Park and Rec were that there was plenty of pickleball being played during the week. So that didn't seem to be a problem.
Well, people who work can't play pickleball during the week. So I don't know.
Is there going to be any mechanism to like evaluate and tinker with this? Or are we just like?
Yeah, I'm sorry, evaluate what?
And like tinker with this. If there's like, like.
I mean, we, I.
We've done.
Right, like once it starts, it's been like two months, it's like. Nobody wants to play pickleball in the morning. I don't know. I was just like, who is looking?
I, I think what we're going to do is, um. Similar to the way that we get information from Michael on just general court reservations. We're going to be asking him for the pickleball court reservations. It'll be tacked into the monthly reports that we do for, um, Park and Rec and to the council. And if at any point in time, the council wants to bring up the issue, um, for discussion in terms of its current status. Um, through city manager, we're happy to bring a report to the council.
I think we should have a check in.
Yeah, so, but what, what I'm proposing is. In the monthly report that you get with regards to the park. There are a number of hours listed for general usage, resident usage, um, tennis instruction, et cetera. Added to that, what, what I'm saying is that we would ask Michael to add to that list. The information with regards to pickleball reservations.
Okay.
And then that way, on a monthly basis, you'll get a readout on where we are.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Good.
I, I, I think Walt's suggestion, I mean, I, I'm fine to go with the recommendation from staff on painting the court. But before we absolutely do that, I think Walt's suggestion is reasonable that you talk to Michael.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm happy to talk to Michael. My concerns are a few fold. With paint, I don't have to worry about maintenance. With tape, somebody's going to complain and we're going to have to either get a contractor out to re-tape it. Or figure out a way to fix it. If it peels up and somebody trips, that's a problem. If it, it peels up and it, and somebody's shoe starts sticking, sticking when they're playing tennis. That's going to be a problem as well. And so for those reasons, that's why we're making that recommendation.
But it's a problem if there's tape.
You mean, people are going to be upset about.
So that, that's an upset thing, not a maintenance or safety issue.
In the rainy season.
Yeah, I think it's a, not a good time of year for tape.
It's not a good time of year for tape, that's for sure, because it'll be the winter. I mean, I don't know when, the, when would the trial start?
January.
Tonight, would it start?
January.
Rainy season.
And won't start till January?
Yeah, that's what the council direction was, is start in January.
Like if we do tape and then it's a bad idea, just like the. Slow nature of government would mean that then you would have to get direction from council to do paint. And then do a, get the money. Like it's just going to take like two meetings and then it's three months, four months go by and it's a six month trial, like.
No, but we can deal with that. But we can deal with, I mean, if you, if, if you wanted to do tape, we could say do tape, but if it doesn't work, paint it.
Just direct.
Don't, don't bring it back to us. It doesn't need to come back to us.
I was told by the, uh, the mayor that the trial will start January 1st.
Yeah, I, I, I asked the question because it's now September. It, it might be able to start in October. I don't know.
Until maybe July 1st before they were able to start the trial.
Well, it depends on when we get all the equipment and the baffling is probably the biggest. So I, I guess the biggest issue is if you want us to move forward with baffling. That's going to be the biggest lead time and cost expenditure.
Right.
Um, I think with the other stuff, it's within signature authority of the city manager. We don't have to go out to a big pub. With the cost of baffling, we'd have to go out to bid.
Well, but it, but I, so Walt brought it up, but, um, but I, I thought it was in the staff report. Um, since the circus club isn't using the baffling they bought.
We, we've asked if we could borrow some, some of that baffling.
Or rent. I mean, I, I'd pay them.
They needed to ask their board and we haven't heard back. And so what we would likely be able to get if they offered it to us, whether it was rent or whatever. It would be for the long side of the tennis court. Next to the, um, I think it's court number two, um, to baffle against that. Um, and we can certainly go that route instead of trying to buy it. Um, and then it's just a matter of, you know, the other stuff's easy. Buying the nets is. Pretty simple, pretty easy. Uh, the other part is scheduling the contractor and finding out when they're available to do the striping.
Can I ask a quick question on the baffling? Um, clearly if we're going to get one for free, I'm in favor of going for free. But if you're going to go out and buy it, the product that you were talking about sounded like it was fiberglass. And there are rubber ones that are denser, I think. And there's newer products that are coming on because this is so popular now. So I just want to make sure we've done the research on what's the most, if we're going to have to pay for it. Make sure we get one that actually is the state of the art.
Yeah, so we provided, I think, three different quotes in the package. Uh, the cheapest one material only, I think was around 13,000.
Was that rubber or what was that one? It didn't say what they were.
It was a kind of a rubberish type thing. Um, the other one, the, and then they went up to 30,000. Uh, one of which was, uh, the quote that the circus club got, which is more of a.
The information.
Blanket material that the quote, well, I don't think they installed that one, but that was the quote. And then the other one was the, uh, acoustifence, which is, um. Uh, want to say probably about a little bit more than an inch of an inch thick, heavy material. And that was also around 30,000 if you went with the green.
Was that on four sides, right?
Huh?
Four sides?
Two sides. Two sides.
The, the ones facing what?
So if we did the baffling on two sides, it would be the long side adjacent to court one. And the short side adjacent to court six.
Two and six you're going to do. You're going to leave it open to the.
Open to the park.
The public, okay. The cheap, the cheap baffling doesn't work, I can tell you that right now.
Yeah, I know. We're, the reason why we're getting it free is because they said it didn't work for them. So now we're kind of.
If you, if you get the old baffling, you're wasting your time.
Yeah, that's, that is not a fair.
You know, then you're, like I said, the other ones are around $30,000 for two sides plus the installation.
That's a lot of money. Does anyone rent them?
That's why they paid $30,000 because they work.
I mean.
What's the return policy for them? Is it six months?
Player Capital.
Zero. You buy it, you use it, it's yours.
I was going to vote against buying any baffling.
Uh, I mean, the other way to go is start it without baffling and then.
Yeah.
If we get it from the circus club, we'll put it up.
Say we go without baffling unless we can get it from the circus club. And I'm willing to pay the circus club some fee.
Okay.
Your dollars.
A couple thousand dollars, I mean.
We'll, we'll reach back out to them. I don't know how often their board meets, but when we talked to the general manager. Uh, he said he, he needed to bring it up to his board, so.
Can I ask some, uh, timing again? Um, if we go without baffling, we already know everyone's worried about sound, so then sound will be a problem. And then we will have to probably consider adding baffling down the line. So. What's that? How long does this take to order? We're still, again, in a six month trial here, so. If the feedback is that sound is a problem. At two months in, and then we decide we're needing to add baffling, then it takes like a month or two to. What are we, what are we doing? I think like.
The, the trial's not just baffling.
Uh, the lead time for some of these quotes is six weeks.
Dick, the, the cheap baffling has been tested with a meter and it failed.
Yeah.
Okay, that's why they have new, new, new stuff. It doesn't even work. It lowers it, but it doesn't lower it to the level for the houses that were the same distance as our house.
Yeah.
So that's what you're going to get. You're going to get three people, at least three people with a problem with. The small, the old, the cheap ba- baffling. So I don't know if you want to do it.
The sound curtain, which was one of the three that you guys listed, they say they cut the sound by 50%.
Which one?
This, I think it was called the sound curtain.
More like a heavy.
Yeah.
Rubber. The ones I've seen are heavy rubber that are.
Yeah, the rubber is the best absorption of, of noise.
Yeah.
The sound curtain, I think, is um a thicker thing, I'd call it, it looks like it's almost like what you would see on the inside of an elevator, you know, when they put the blankets up.
Oh, a padding.
So it's more of a padded.
Oh, wow. In Foster City, they have um ru- literally a rubber product.
Yeah, so that's the sound curtain, that that's one. The acoustifence, I actually have a sample in my office of what it is, that's also around thirty thousand for the material. Um and that's the heavy, it's a heavy um plasticky material.
Could we get something from circus club and try?
That's what we're, that's what we're looking at.
I think that's what we should do.
So what is the, do we need direction or a motion today?
That'll tell us.
This direction?
Direction.
It's, it, where, so let's take each item and see where we are in each one. So one was on the taping versus paint, sound like our advice is to to go with the paint, even though that's more money.
Well, I think talk to Michael.
Yeah, so, alright, so why doesn't the direction, you get further information on the feasibility of.
You guys can decide with Michael what makes the most sense on taping versus painted.
Cause there's a big price difference there too, that's huge price difference.
There's an impression for, um, yeah, but it's.
Well, if 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 Michael likes tape because it's easier and and better, but we still have a risk issue, we're the ones on the hook from a liability perspective.
But what's the risk?
A trip and fall of an eighty-year-old on a piece of tape.
But aren't they like, but it's used as commercially, isn't it, is it, are there people that use that?
They're meant as temporary and when we say temporary, it's like three days, four days or a week, not six months.
Okay.
That that that's my concern is.
I mean, we can talk to Michael, but just let us make that call at the end of that.
Okay.
You guys can make that call.
And then what were the other issues, that it was two versus four is the other thing we debated.
Two versus four courts?
Yes, so can we talk about two versus? Oh, I'd like to close public comment and let's uh, let's get to closure here. So can we talk quickly about the four versus two, that was the other one that we were debating?
So you're assuming that um there's gonna be four people on each court, right, playing doubles, right? Not one and one, it's usually, okay, so I would say two courts.
Rick, what do you think?
I'm a hundred percent opposed to four courts, it's culturally totally wrong for the.
Sounds fine.
Okay, so it's 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 two, we're gonna leave you to decide on the tape and what, was there another issue? The baffling, we're gonna first.
Days of the week as well.
Days of the week.
Days of the week.
Saturday or no Saturday.
Okay, I think that we should keep it as proposed, including Saturday.
I would, I think yes, and I think that it should be to the staff's direct discretion and Parks and Rec. To make changes as needed, because Parks meets monthly, right, so they'll be going over this, so they can move swiftly. And autonomously potentially and not have it on a council agenda.
Are they weighted any particular, are they weighted any particular direction?
Yeah, I think that's.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I am concerned about that.
Are three members on the committee that are strongly in favor of pickleball? And there are I don't know, one or two that are opposed and there are uh two or three that are kind of, you know, they go on different issues.
Well, I do have a problem in that, this is supposed to be a study, so we can't just let it, whatever people feel like doing. We have to have some parameters so that we're actually getting fair results of what we're getting.
I think it should be, we we should set what the times are, we.
Yeah.
And it sounds like people want to include Saturday, I I was concerned about Saturday, because it's gonna knock from what we looked at, at least four tennis players out every week. And we're gonna hear about that, that's gonna create some antagonism.
We're gonna hear about it anyway.
No, but that, but.
Can you limit the the hours, uh you know, kind of restrict the hours?
Well, that that's what we're doing.
They are restricted.
Yeah, and so just to remind um the council as to how the reservation system works and how it will work. So right now, there's six courts up on the reservation system. And you make your one-hour block reservation on any court that's open at that period of time. Up to seven days ahead of time. Because you can't go too far up. What will happen with the trial is Michael will blackout tennis court one during the trial hours. He will add to the system pickleball court one, pickleball court two. That will be open for reservation during the hours of the trial where court one is blacked out. So at nine o'clock in the morning, seven days a week, based on what you're saying. You can reserve pickleball court one, pickleball court two, tennis courts three, uh two through six. At twelve o'clock. No pickleball court reservations are available, tennis courts one through six are open. And so the sist, by setting the hours, it actually makes it easier for the reservation system.
And track.
And the tracking, so whoever makes a reservation, we will have output from Michael is who reserved pickleball court one, how many hours was it not used? You know, on, on Tuesdays at nine o'clock or whatever it was.
Does someone have to put the, put the net up themselves?
No, so what it'll be is we will buy the nets, they are rollable, they'll be rollable, we'll put them together and they're gonna be pushed off to the side of the court.
So the pickleball players will put them up.
So the pickleball court player will move it to the center line of that court.
Yeah.
At, the first player will do it and then when the tennis court play, when the tennis player comes, they're just gonna wheel it off to the side.
So if you had a tennis player that wanted to sabotage us, they could book both of those two things for pickleball and actually just go in and play tennis. And they can do it, they could do it for the whole.
They would have to have two.
Seven days advance.
They would have to have two people to do it because you only can reserve one of the pickleball courts.
The more likely abuse
Yeah.
Is that a pickleball player reserves the tennis court.
Yeah.
One at one P M.
And if there's no player, they run and put this.
And they let a friend in and they have, you know, or they just play one pickleball net.
Or maybe you can play pickleball without actual lines, those courts or those uh nets are movable, you can roll them from court to court. There's nothing that says a player can't play pickleball on court number two.
So we'll, we'll just see if there's abuses, we'll hear, we'll hear.
I'm sure.
Pickleball players and tennis players with their.
Tennis pavilion, guys.
And I think the direction on the baffling is push hard on the circus club.
Right, and we, if we can't get it from the circus club, we'll advise the council and move forward in one direction or another if we have complaints about it.
There's a second market somewhere.
Used, yeah, go, go on eBay.
Yeah, there's not much of a second market, pickleball's on.
So hot, yeah.
The upswing.
Yes.
I think we should.
Are we done?
But I'm out.
Your motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Alright.
Today, done.